We have to, yeah. I have noticed that if it's not on, I don't record very well. Um, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this January twenty second, twenty twenty five, um, work study session of the Longmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, the first, um, order of business is a call to order, which we've just done, and then a roll call, um, by our recording secretary, Jane Madrid.
Chair Height.
Is present.
Commissioner Ling.
Present.
Commissioner Boone. Commissioner Poland.
Here.
Commissioner Popkin.
Here.
Commissioner Saunders.
Here.
Commissioner Earl.
Here.
Commissioner Armet.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Wang. Chair, you have a quorum.
We have everybody. Um, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, the second, uh, agenda item is, uh, reading of the city and people of Longmont's land acknowledgement, which goes as follows. We acknowledge that Longmont sits on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and you and other indigenous peoples. We honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that these first peoples had with this land. It is our commitment, um, to face the injustices that happened when the land was taken, um, and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again. Thank you. Next agenda item is communications. Um, planning director Grant Penland, I don't know if you've had anything to present?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. This is, um, traditionally not a public hearing, but if there are members of the public, um, who would wish to speak, I do have discretion to allow you to do so. Um, seeing none, I will move forward, um, to the, um, continuation of prior business. Is there any? I don't believe there is. Um, and then with respect to the items that we do have on our agenda, new business, first item is, um, item A, overview and update regarding Longmont Transportation Mobility Plan, or the T M P.
Great. Good evening, everyone, uh, chair and members of the commission. My name is Phil Greenwald. I'm the transportation planning manager with the city of Longmont. I, um, recognize a lot of you from other places, so it's good to see you again. It's been a long time really since we've been in front of you, and, uh, I take some blame in that, so I apologize, but we will certainly, I know your, your business on a typical third Wednesday night is pretty full, so, um, this might be a little lighter than you're used to, but I, I'm hoping we can fill your time with some good stuff and, and get you to some good questions too, that I'm sure you have about transportation. So it is really about transportation tonight, uh, for the first two thirds, and then, uh, Tony Chacon will come in and talk about the urban renewal authority with you later. So just to get you started, I do want to let you know that we are in this process of the transportation mobility plan. So this is kind of one of these things that we do, we try to do them every five to ten years, so we're in that cycle right now. It, it, it's tied into Envision Longmont, which is really the plan that you guys hear a lot about, and, uh, we, we appreciate that, and you have such great ties to it, but this is really that transportation component of that. So we're trying to do that update now, and, and we're very excited about it. We're almost, you'll see that we're getting really close because the project recap pieces really how our plan progress is going, and we've been working on this for better part of, uh, year and a half, and you had, um, Anna Lukach was the person who was tied into this plan with, for Planning and Zoning Commission, and we were hoping that she could be that conduit to communicate with you all, and obviously, that maybe lasted for about three quarters of our planning process, and then, um, unfortunately, I mean, great for her, but unfortunately for us, we lost that, that, that link. So anyway, we're right at the very end here, so we've been going through lots of different things. Phase one was really in the latter part of about a year ago. We started going through some ideas of what our project really needed to look at, and that was the state of transportation in Longmont, the existing state, so really find out where we are, and start to con, or construct those vision and goals pieces that we need to move forward with. The public engagement was pretty robust. We went out with some really good, um, ideas of getting some feedback from folks of what they wanted to see. We were kind of under that impression that maybe we're kind of doing things that Envision Longmont really had a lot of the, um, pieces already in place from the twenty sixteen era plan, and that not much had really changed in the public, but we did want to find that out, so we did go to the, the public and, and talk to them, have those conversations. We also had a very interesting and, uh, it was a very detailed piece of mapping where we had people, uh, reference back to a map and tell us where they thought problems were good things and bad things, but of course, we usually heard about problems, so quite frankly, that's the, that's the way it goes, right? Phase two is fall of twenty twenty four, so we, uh, just kind of have been wrapping up, seems like we just wrapped up, but here we are already, uh, January, what is it, twenty second of, of twenty twenty five, so time flies. Draft recommendations, we got those, uh, uh, for, for the walking piece, for the bicycling piece, for the transit piece, for the roadway, um, and really prioritize those lists and try to kind of come up with some more criteria to figure that out. We also came up with a goal, group of, uh, programs and policies that I'll talk a little bit more about, and we did capture more feedback from folks as we went back out for a second round of public outreach, and so you can see that right now, we're kind of in that stage. The arrow should be moved over and be right on top of winter twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, the final Longmont T M P. Uh, we're releasing the final draft on Monday. In fact, we're hoping to release it tomorrow, but Monday is the date that we're saying we'll have it open to the public, and you will have your chance to go back out there and, and take a look at it, and give us those last comments that we really need to do to kind of tie this together. There are some things that are out there that we need to, we need to add, so that'll be great. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, people always ask, you know, who did you talk to? What, what was your process like? So I just did want to go over that really quick. We did have, um, we had only three hundred touch points. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it was really good in phase two to kind of wrap up and hear from folks as we were putting everything together. That really brought us up to, we said thirteen, we were really closer to fifteen hundred when we, um, because this was, this slide's from November, so since then, we've already had another two hundred, so, um, we have fifteen hundred total touch points, and the goal was really to receive that feedback and understand those priorities from people, and you can see that, um, we, we had some, we had, uh, our steering committee, which, which was the place where Anna was part of, and unfortunately, we didn't have an alternate to kind of take her place in the latter part. We also did an open house, um, we did online surveying, we did focus groups, and we did some interceptive events, so that's kind of where we talked to people, and then people really came back very strongly about wanting a connected, high comfort bicycle and pedestrian network, safe, healthy, convenient, and reliable mobility for everyone, so that everybody could get around, and we'll talk more about kind of what we've been doing in that realm. I think you've all heard about Ride Longmont, hopefully, and, and the great things we're doing in microtransit so far, so we're very excited about that, and I do need to, um, look behind my shoulder and just let you know that we do have, uh, Kaylee Fallon in the back, who's really working on our microtransit piece now, so, um, she's really taking that over and does the day-to-day kind of stuff, and then, um, Kemi Edson is behind her, and she's really our Vision Zero coordinator, and I think you've met her before, but if you haven't, that's, uh, Kemi's doing our Vision Zero work, so we're very excited about that, and hopefully you all know that Vision Zero is really that idea of, uh, zero is the most fatalities that we ever want to see in this town, and that's our goal, uh, every year, every year from here on out, so, um, it's always been our goal, but, uh, we're stating it publicly. So, um, and then Ben Ortiz will be up later, uh, so this is four. We've, Ben and I have been working as a twosome for a little while doing the two-step here, but, uh, we do have, we doubled our staff in the last year, so we're very proud of that, so it's very exciting that we have some help now, and we can do, do a lot of the implementation pieces of what you're gonna see tonight. Um, going on with our list, connect the city to regional destinations, um, getting, getting some of those regional connections made, um, provide convenient alternatives to driving, leverage development opportunities, that's a lot of what you guys do, and using those opportunities to kind of get some, um, good infrastructure built in this town as well, and then access to key destinations, so those are the things that we really heard, the top destinations, I won't go through all of these, but really trails and parks, the downtown area, um, bus stops, schools, those kind of things, as you'd imagine, are our top, um, destinations for walking and rolling. Uh, we did hear about support for prioritizing bicycle investments. How supportive are you of removing vehicle travel lanes, turn lanes, and our Han Street parking to build high comfort bikeways in Longmont? So we were kind of surprised that many people were neutral, which was, which was better than hearing that everybody did not support that, so we did get, um, about seventeen percent support, so eighteen percent did not support that, but we were, other folks were just kind of agnostic about that, so that's, that's actually good news in our book, because that does mean people are willing to sacrifice some of this area for, where cars are currently kind of using space and transition that to bicycle investments. In transit, we heard themes such as enhance that regional transit that I talked about before. People really wanted to see better frequency between Boulder and, Boulder and Longmont and Fort Collins in Longmont, and we do have, um, some exciting new things obviously happening between here and Boulder that you've probably seen along the diagonal, where we're, uh, C dot, actually, the Colorado Department of Transportation is doing a lot of work to, um, make our commutes a little easier and make our transit, our trans, travel to Boulder easier regardless of what mode we pick, so that'll be, that's, we're looking forward to that, and then people were really excited about getting to Lyons, Estes Park, Frederick, Firestone, and Greeley, which was interesting, so those are places that we don't really serve well or at all right now, so we do need to look into how we provide those connections as well. And then that idea of improving the usability and the comfort of bus stops, right now, Ben is working on, we're trying to get, uh, seating at every bus stop, so at least there's a place, you know, a dignified place to actually sit as you wait for a bus rather than trying to sit on a curb, and you can imagine how that is when you're getting to my age or older, where sitting down and getting up is, uh, not as fun as it used to be, so, um, and then also make bus service more efficient with dedicated bus, or dedicated lanes for the buses, and obviously bringing rail to, to Longmont has been something we're gonna just continue to, that's a mantra that just continues and continues, as you'll hear, uh, at city council meetings, um, even at airport advisory board meetings, everybody's talking about wanting to keep that rail. So bike facilities, I'm not gonna go too much into this because we're really starting to formulate this, and you'll see the link and be able to actually dig into this on your own, uh, again, starting Monday when the draft plan is released, but just the idea that we have a bunch of different things we're trying to define out there as far as lanes, we're really trying to get to the idea of at least having buffered bike lanes everywhere we can, and if we can, if we can, we're trying to really push for protected bike lanes, so those are the kind of the two highlights from this, uh, map that I really want to point out, that those are the future facilities that we don't really have too much out there right now. We have a few buffered bicycle lanes, and we did try an experiment on Pike Road a couple years ago that was to separate those with bollards. Uh, we, we didn't do it correctly, I'll just be honest with you, and so we saw some failures there that we've learned from, so that's good, so we know how not to do them, uh, in the future, but we've learned some things, and we've learned some things from others, others, uh, communities as well. You'll see multi-use trails on here too. Side paths are basically sidewalks that run adjacent to like a, a larger arterial street like, uh, Ken Pratt Boulevard or Main Street. It's where you have like the six or six to eight foot path that's right next to it. It's kind of hard to say that it's comfortable and, and, and low stress, but, um, they are lower stress than, uh, you know, a narrower sidewalk in the same area, so we do put those on our plan as well. Pedestrian infrastructure, we, we did try to look at these, uh, the idea of, um, which arterial streets are served currently by transit and will be in the future served by transit, so that we really enhance that walkability, and all other, uh, streets are by transit kind of take that next level, the, and all other streets is basically collector level streets, so we have the arterials as the kind of the, the main street, the Ken Pratt Boulevard again, the Hoover streets, and then the art, the collector streets are more like, uh, Mountain View Avenue, uh, fifteenth, twenty-first, those kind of, those kind of streets, and then arterial streets within six hundred feet of a high priority destination, and you'll see those destinations, our trailheads, downtown parks, schools, library, those kind of things. All other streets within six hundred feet of high priority destinations to get their designation, so this is how we kind of, um, kind of built that priority as we move forward on different projects, and you'll see, uh, Main Street is one of our big ones, uh, obviously Hoover, Ken Pratt Boulevard, all the, all the ones we've kind of talked about, Third Avenue as well. So transit, uh, we have some exciting things coming in transit, you'll see the map on the left is, uh, the proposal by the Regional Transportation District, which is really the group that provides the city of Longmont with all of its public transit, basically. We do work with Fort Collins, and they provide some public transit, and now we are, um, delving into that public transit realm with the Ride Longmont piece, the, the microtransit, so we, we are starting to layer it, so it's starting to become exciting with, um, different levels of that transportation network or that transit network on top of the other transportation pieces we have. So really, the idea of upgrading that R T D Longmont feeder plan, that's what you see on number one there is, uh, trying to enhance, you'll see that there's actually service being shown out on Ken Pratt Boulevard out to Sandstone Ranch, which has never really been part of the program before, unfortunately, even though we knew construction was coming, and we knew things were being built out there with the mall, the Walmart, the hospital, all these different things, we kept on, every time there was a new, uh, new development that was approved, we would go to R T D and say, hey, this has been approved, we're gonna have a lot of people who want to travel here, start thinking about a fixed route bus out there, and, uh, you can see how long that's taken, so that Walmart was probably built twenty, two thousand and five, two thousand and eight, so, um, it's been, it's been a slog, to say the least. Upgrade bus stops, so we are looking at all the different bus stops, and we've done evaluations on all of them to see what they have existing and what they need, and so we have a lot of that information here too, so prioritized by boardings, obviously, so you can see that the boardings are bigger circles, and this will again be on that, uh, draft plan that's gonna be released on Monday, and you can actually go in and make comments, so that'll be good. The kind of the other phase of transit is the idea that we'll have those planned regional investments, so this very clearly shows the diagonal corridor or the Ken Pratt Boulevard corridor heading toward Boulder out of the southwest part of the city, and you'll also see the future rail being, uh, shown there as well as the First and Main Station, which we now, according to R T D, have to rename, so ready for the new name, at First and Main, it's gonna be called Main and First. So there's the change that we get. There's a new way of naming, the nomenclature has changed, so we're gonna roll with it. Um, Eighth and Kaufman becomes Kaufman and Eighth, so I guess the, the North-South Street has to go first now, and the East-West goes second, so we'll do that, um, and then number four is really that big one that we keep bragging about is our investment in microtransit, and, um, would love to talk to you more about it, and again, Kaylee's here, if you have specific questions, we can get those answered for you too. Looking at twenty twenty nine and beyond, kind of the longer range piece, we really want to look at how the city is set up for transit in the future, and what kind of places are we looking at? You'll see mobility scores, and those are really based on how many, how many cars does do the households own, so this is all census data piece, and so it talks about income levels, um, that desirability to use transit, and then, uh, there's many other factors that go into this, but, um, just to give you an idea of, we are looking at the percent of people with a disability, the percent of households with, without a vehicle, the percent of older adults in a zone, percent of children and youth under eighteen, percent of people with limited English proficiency, so the darker the color, the more proficient that, or the more likely it is that transit will work in those areas, so we do want to make sure we're looking at those areas, and we think that the data coming from microtransit will prove that out, so we're getting a lot of good data about origins and destinations with, with that, well, we hope to, uh, we don't have it yet, because it's only been running for over a month. So roadway, obviously, roadways are kind of backbone to this whole thing, and we, what we tell people is, we feel like over the last fifty years, our city and our engineers and our planners have done a really awesome job in making traveling by car very easy, and so we need to flip that narrative a little bit because the priorities are switching at a policy level, so we do want to reflect those changes and, and bring this back down to, to more, doing some more work at the intersections and doing it along the corridors that really work for all modes, so I'll just kind of leave it at that, and, uh, obviously, traffic calming is a big piece of that too, so we are just working on how we can use Vision Zero to, uh, kind of transition into the new era, I guess, of, of Longmont's transportation, and how we look at it more holistically. So program creation, we've done some things here, uh, I did throw in the picture of the mayor in the Ride Longmont vehicle, so we were able to kind of luckily get that within the last month here, but there are general programs, obviously, maintenance is a huge issue, and it really does take a lot of our budget when you talk to the engineers and the, and the street folks, the, the amount of budget and the, the dollars that it takes to really maintain the current system, we have over a hundred traffic signals, we have over five, or over four hundred and thirty, uh, miles of roadway that we take care of, so these are all things that kind of go into the, into playing, um, or going into the budget of how we decide how do we kind of build the next level. You'll see parking in there, there's some, um, uh, e-bike restrictions, those are really more about, um, uh, the idea of where e-bikes can go, and, and Ben will talk more about that when he talks about bicycle facilities, which was a specific request of this group. Merging mobility, we just want to let you know that we are thinking about intelligent transportation systems. Automated enforcement is a big deal right now, uh, council just approved the ability to go out with cameras and take pictures of people running, uh, traffic, red, red traffic lights and going too fast, well over the speed limit, so we'll be able to do some automated enforcement. I know that's not always so popular, but it is a great way to, to enforce, because our police force, um, does not have the resources to do as much as we ask them to do with, uh, a city over a hundred thousand people. Autonomous and connected vehicles, uh, that question comes up just about every conversation I have about, um, transportation, so we just wanted to let you know, we are considering it, uh, a lot of that goes into, a lot of the pieces of that go into really making sure that your facilities are kind of that grade A, uh, well painted, so that the, the markings are very clear for those cameras, and, uh, we have very clear delineation of where the lanes are and, and where not lane, where lanes are not, and then, we do want to talk a little bit later too about e-bike share, so that will come up, uh, we're doing some more work with car share, uh, and that's in our plan as well, so just the transportation demand management pieces, bicycle parking is a big deal, we'll, we'll delve into that more as well, bike share programs are the same, uh, or similar to the e-bike share, uh, and you'll see these other pieces that we really want to look at as far as, um, transportation demand management, transportation demand management strategies that really help us get people out of their cars, um, in, in a, you know, so they feel comfortable and safe, and it's an efficient way of moving still. So our next steps, just to wrap things up a little bit on my end, is to talk about the development, the, the develop the final plan, and we just talked about, that's coming out January twenty seventh on Monday, there'll be a couple weeks of public review of that plan, so we're looking forward to the comments back on that to really hopefully tie a bow and bring this back to the boards and commissions. We're hoping, uh, you can see the schedule there, we're hoping to come back to you on February nineteenth in a very quick way, because I know you're very busy that night, and, um, uh, it's about our only chance to get to you before we go to city council, so we do want to chat with you maybe very briefly, and I need to ask permission of, um, the, the planning director, of course, to get that on your agenda, but we're hoping that this isn't the only time we talk about this, this is really kind of to set, set things up, and you don't have the plan in front of you, so I'd, I'd feel terrible, but maybe we do this through, um, some more informal channels like emails and just make sure that we can get together and get your formal recommendation if, if you choose to go there, and then finally, city council on February twenty fifth. So that's really what we have for you tonight as far as the transportation mobility plan, uh, it's a quick, quick, um, introduction, I'm sure, and I, I know that I've seen a lot of your faces at the different events that we've had, so I'm really happy that you were able to find us and, and make your comments known, um, but again, we would come back to you in about a month and ask for your formal recommendation, once you get a chance to see the plan, and we can get that out to you. So if there are any questions, I turn it back to the chair.
Yeah, are there any questions? I have one. What's a high comfort bicycle? Or is there a bicycle mode of transportation that's high comfort?
Well, we just, uh, we talked about more on the line, on lines of stress levels, so if you saw something that said high comfort bicycle, I think that's something we're all looking for, right? A high comfort bicycle, but, um, I think it's really that lower stress. It's, the comfort comes from the facility, so as you're bicycling, do you feel comfortable on that facility, or do you have a level of stress that just makes you not, you know, just creates, um, just that, uh, anxiety and worry, and we have a lot of folks who just will not go out, especially on a day like today, right, where it's, there's snow and different things on the, on those facilities, so we need to start looking at maintenance, how we maintain things. I know Boulder is just saying, uh, very recently that now they've flipped their snow maintenance program so that the trails and the bike lanes are cleared first, and then roads, I don't know if we're ready for that yet, but, uh, it's something to think about as far as how the other communities are starting to think about these things, but we talked about buffered and separated bike lanes, that separation from the traffic also creates some of that high comfort or that better comfort on the bicycle?
Which seems to me all a great idea, um, to encourage people to use alternative means of transportation, um, but it also occurs to me that our built environment is not conducive to, um, non-vehicular, um, mobility, meaning that to get to a grocery store, you kind of need a car.
Mm-hmm.
We're not built, we, we're not built out, um, with corner bodegas, um, that, that allow people to, to shop with handbags, um, you need a car with something to throw a week's worth of groceries into it. How do planner, transportation planners address that issue, and how can city planners, at least review boards of city planners, um, help that process move along?
Uh, that's a great point. It's, it's really what we're looking for in this transportation mobility plan, is more comments like that that say, we desire better facilities for bicycles, or we need more facilities like the microtransit, which has proven very popular for people shopping. We've got a lot of feedback even in the first month that just says, hey, I was able to go to King Supers or Safeway or Walmart, uh, I went with a couple other people, they were, you know, we rode together, we went to, uh, the supermarket, we all got our bags or groceries, um, called for the return trip, we were able to pull all our groceries into that shared, shared transit vehicle, and people are doing it on the bus all the time too, so it's, it's maybe not just bicycles, but you're right, the car piece is a, is a big piece of it in Longmont, unfortunately, and so we do need to start, we're thinking about how do we flip that narrative, how do we make the streets safer for bicycling? But other, people are finding other ways of, of working it as well.
And not to totally dominate the rap, but what does microtransit mean?
It just means, um, It just means, it's not, so it's not wholly public transit, where it's so you have the different-sized vehicles, right? We have the regional buses, over-the-road coaches, which are the big ones with the, you can load your luggage underneath and all those good things, kind of the Greyhound example. Then, there's the longer city buses, the forty-five footers. Those are the typical two-door, kind of front door and a mid-door. We have a smaller version of that, too, that really runs around Longmont. That's the ones you see around Longmont, is the shorter version of that bus, the thirty-footers. And then, you get into the Via Mobility, which is out of Boulder. They have those bigger vans that are meant for people with disabilities, and it's really a door-through-door service, senior population that aren't mobile. So, that is really meant for that. And so, our microtransit is really just a minivan, basically. So, it's a smaller, it's a smaller unit of travel as well. But it's a little bit more than a single occupant, or it's a little bit larger than like a sedan. And that's really how you travel in Uber and Lyft. So, it's the next step up, I guess, from Uber and Lyft. It's the next step down from that Via, what we call paratransit. So, it's just a, it's just a minivan, really, when you get down to it. And it just means that it, you know, it's more geared toward the very local. So, micro is the very local.
So, available to whom and how? I mean, do you order it up like an Uber, but you share it with your next-door neighbor?
Yeah, we, we, basically, it is like an Uber. And so, you have an app, and you can go to Ride Longmont. I'll be the salesman right here, but if you go to Ride Longmont on your phone, you can download that app. And it basically
For that.
And people have some examples, so that's great. Ride Longmont is an app. It's, you can also call in. So, there's a call-in service. Did I do that right? Yes, I'm getting the confirmation that that is the correct number, even after a month. But, so you can call in. If you don't have a smartphone, you can call in. If you don't speak English, you can use the call-in service. They can get you quickly to whatever language you choose to speak in. And obviously, your app is in your language as well. You order it. The whole concept was, once you order your ride, it should take no more than fifteen minutes to get to where you are. You may have to walk. Right now, it's about one to three hundred feet is your total walk distance that we've seen with the examples we've seen so far. So, you may have to walk to a corner, or to another bus stop, or something that's close by. It won't be right in front of your home. You'll wait for the van there. It'll pick you up, and within fifteen minutes, you should be at your destination. So, total, from the time you order it to the time you reach your destination, thirty minutes.
Throughout the city of Longmont?
All of the city, we included the entire planning area. So, even if you live outside the city limits and you're in a, you know, what we call enclaves, right? You'll still get the service. We also have a little bubble of service that's out there at one-nineteen and I-twenty-five. They just finished that mobility hub. I think we've all seen it being built. We have bus-staying service now that goes direct to Denver in thirty-five minutes. So, you can get out there. The trick, I'm kinda throwing out there as a challenge is, see if on a weekend, you can go out there, catch the bus staying down to Denver in time to get the ski train up to Winter Park. Come back, use the microtransit to get back into your house. So, we'll see, we'll see. I wouldn't say to do that on a Sunday, but on Saturday, I think that'll work. But the idea is that you can get out there, and you can get anywhere in the city.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Boone?
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. So, this preliminary report that's coming out on Monday, where do we find that link?
We will send that to everyone. We'll make sure that you have that link directly. We're not sure where it's gonna be right now, because it's just, we need to just make sure that we are working with our webmaster to make sure we have it in the right place. But I will send that. We'll make sure that all the boards and commissions have that link on Monday.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? I'm sorry. Mr. Poplin?
Thank you, Chair Height. Thank you, Phil, and everyone who contributed to this report and this effort. Sorry to miss Commissioner, former Commissioner Lou Kocch here. Would love to have her present for this. Couple clarifying questions. One, when we talk about transit improvements, what I didn't hear, maybe I missed this in the rapid-fire presentation here, but do we have transit utilization numbers specifically for like the bus routes that you think, that you've been looking at current, in terms of present utilization? In terms of projecting out for future routes and use?
We have been, unfortunately, we've had a difficult time getting data from the Regional Transportation District for this. They've changed their methods of reporting, and I'll be quite frank with you, is that with COVID, there was such a precipitous drop in transit ridership that I think nobody wants to show those numbers, because they're so, they were so low. And they are starting to recovery, recover, but it's still, when you're comparing over a course of five years, we obviously have three years in there where it's really bad. But we do not have clear utilization numbers that we used to get prior to the pandemic. So, we are working on trying to get a better idea. That's one of the pieces of, one of my comments back to our consultant is, how do we, how do we show better numbers on our fixed route? So that people can have an idea of what, where things are working and where things are not. So, we don't, we don't have a clear picture.
So, the fixed routes that are run through Longmont are generally through RTD, correct? With the exception of the Ride, microtransit.
Yeah, and that's not a fixed, that's not a fixed route?
Correct.
Technically?
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, so, and there is just no data that has been shared with the city of Longmont from RTD as a result of?
It's been, I can say it's been shared, but I just, it's not, it's not comparable data. So, I don't have comparable data back to the yearly numbers, the annual numbers I used to get on every route, and to go back and be able to compare what those, what those used to be. So, there's a disconnect, and we just need to reconnect.
Got it. Okay. Can you go back to the slide that had, I think it said like roundabouts and intersection improvements and other things? I just wanted to make sure I was seeing that correctly. Yes, that one.
Yeah, so I glossed over this pretty quickly.
No, it's fine. There's so much information in here. If I'm reading this correctly, there's one roundabout recommended? And that's in the northeast on County Line Road? Is that correct?
We are going to, that is gonna be changed in the draft that you see, because I was, I was not comfortable with that either. Because I thought any of these blue circles could really be roundabouts, depending on, you know, the specifics of the intersection. And some of them just don't lend themselves well to roundabouts, but a lot of them do. So, yeah, I don't wanna just sit there with one roundabout. So, that will be, that will be changed. We're moving roundabouts into the idea of multimodal intersections.
Got it. Okay. And that's what the blue dots almost everywhere are?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Not saying that those, not assuming that those will all become roundabouts, but you're looking at roundabout versus other ways of managing the multimodal flows. Got it. Somewhat similarly, and maybe, again, this was in a different slide here, but in terms of, there's traffic calming mentioned on this. Are speed bumps or other types of roadway narrowing strategies somewhere mapped around the city? I'm curious how, you know, feedback on, hey, people are speeding on this street regularly. Can we calm that? You know, how that, how that goes through the process? I'm sure it's not, you get three calls, and then you suddenly put in a speed bump. So, what's the process, and how does that factor into the longer-range TNP?
Yeah, that's a great question. We were just meeting on that earlier this morning about how we transition our current neighborhood traffic mitigation program into something that's realistic and doable, and something that we can act on almost immediately, rather than, you know, kinda pushing people off, because there's so many elements that go into traffic calming. But the idea is that this is more of kind of the umbrella statement about traffic calming, and we really do want to go into the next phase of the Vision Zero. So, Kami is currently working on getting the action plan going. So, that's, once we kinda wrap this up, we move into the action planning piece of Vision Zero, where we'll actually look at what has to hap, what can happen at these different intersections to really affect traffic calming in a real, a real way, and really get people to slow down.
Sure. Though, when you talk about intersections, you'd be doing a different measure than a speed bump or kind of roadway narrowing, correct?
Right. That, those are, those are tools in the toolbox.
Yeah.
But what we look at is how to mix the different tools, so that we're coming up with what's appropriate for that neighborhood.
Yeah. And the reason I ask about that is particularly because we hear a lot of feedback from residents when we're handling new proposals about traffic. And that cuts both ways, right? It cuts first, the more traffic you have, often the slower traffic moves by sheer force of human behavior. But at the same time, the more vehicle flows that you have, if it's not a, you know, not bumper-to-bumper, but if it's not, if it's not having the effect of slowing traffic, but just more cars at a certain time of day, then you could have more people driving at higher speeds on average during those parts of the day. So, it cuts both in the direction of slowing traffic down, and also having more vehicular flows that are going at a faster rate during different periods of time. So, you know, we don't always know what tools we should be thinking about at that moment. And yet, it seems like there is a toolbox that the city is playing with. And, you know, I think it would be actually helpful for us to understand your process on how feedback, like what that feedback loop is, so that we aren't just proposing like, well, we're gonna just throw a speed bump condition there.
Right. That works perfectly with what we're trying to do with the action plan, because once that action plan is complete, it will make recommendations to our standards and specifications to start putting these, to start implementing these, so you will see them as the projects come before you. So, you don't have to come up with a solution there. We will hopefully have a solution before it gets to this board and the city council, and the other different boards that have to review these projects. So, we're hoping that the standards can change, so we can address these issues before they become issues, so we can be proactive about them. And right now, we're more reactive, and that's just kind of the nature of where we're at. But Vision Zero, we're hoping, will be a big element in addressing those issues.
And so, the plan there, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, shifting it from, in the development review process, basically, to have those kind of traffic calming measures proposed as part of the package that kinda comes our way, instead of reactive once something gets built, or once it's kind of moving further along in the process of like, hey, you know, based on this traffic study and whatnot, we actually think this could be an issue. Let's throw it in.
Right. So, our engineers have that tool ready to go, so they can implement it as a standard and share that with the developer and say, "This is our standard. You need to do these things to calm traffic, because we're based on volumes and speeds that are projected. We need you to do certain things here." And we tried to do that a couple of years ago, where we tried to say, hey, you have to have a traffic calming device if you have a linear piece of roadway that's longer than, I think it's a thousand feet, or a thousand feet or less, close, or six hundred. Anyway, if you have a linear street that obviously looks like it could be, it's, there's no impediments, no curves, we try to do something where we put something in there. But these standards will allow us to talk about lane widths and sidewalk widths, and all those different things that kinda go into making it more pleasant experience for everyone, rather than just driving.
Gotcha. And maybe this is a question, question for Grant, but if, in this, in this vision that Phil is describing, where the traffic calming measures are kind of proposed proactively as part of a development package, would that mean that the cost burden falls to the developer to pay for, in the same way like when we were talking about the Quail Road annexation with the roundabout at Larkspur and Clover Basin, that that was part of what the developer's commitment would be?
Yes. Commissioner, that would be typical. It may end up being shared by multiple, depending on the circumstance. But yeah, the intent would be fall to the developer.
Cool. Thank you. Our reserve?
Commissioner Saunders is next?
Yeah.
No whispering.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair Height. Red means go.
Dog, go.
Phil, I just wanna say congratulations on the microtransit. Because the first time I heard about microtransit was, I was sitting next to then-council member Peck at Sustainability Plan Meeting, and I heard about microtransit, and we thought it sounded really great. And we've been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. And then, I started hearing about it a couple of years ago, and then I was waiting and waiting and waiting, and I was like, is it gonna happen, really? And then, to your credit, I'm sitting here next to these fine commissioners, and they're showing me the app that I didn't even know existed, and here, boom! So, congratulations to your team, and how great it sounds. It's already going. So, here's my question. Can my kids ride it, who are under eighteen?
Are they thirteen or over?
Well, yes, they are thirteen or over.
So, they can ride it by themselves?
Wow. How does that work?
So, they would have the app, or you could have the app on your, on your phone, and order up that service, and check out what time it needs to show up. And you probably would wanna be with them, or they can go by themselves out to the place to wait. You may wanna check that out the first time, and just make sure they're comfortable. I had some issues with it the first time, because I was standing right in front of my neighbor's house, right? And it looked a little strange, so I went across the street to the, to the stop sign, you know? And so, there's, there's kind of nuances to this whole thing, but it's very easy. So, the kids can go out there. They're gonna be really used to using these kind of apps, anyway. And they just need to kinda line up their dot with the place where it tells you to wait.
Yeah.
And I just like to do the little cab, that's probably just me, but I like to do the little hail to make sure they know that I'm the person to pick up, right? And you've seen the green and black vans, so they're very well, oh, okay.
I know. I feel like I've been living under a rock. I'm not kidding. I'm so embarrassed. I know, Kami. I feel like you should come up and give us a little synopsis, like Commissioner Height, too. Like, I, you know, I'd like that you're giving the little sales pitch. I think that's great. My concern as a parent, though, as far as thirteen and up to eighteen, the vetting process for the drivers.
Yeah. And the drivers go through a much, I think, a very rigorous process of background checks, making sure. And they have to pass certain tests, too, to be, to continue as a driver. So, if they show tendencies of being late, or missing their stop, or taking the wrong route, because they have to follow a specific route on their, on their trip as well, because the software is very specific about how you work your way through town, and who you pick, or where you pick people up. That's the other thing. They may have to share the ride with somebody.
Yeah.
But everything's been very positive so far, knock on wood, that people have been, you know, they've shared rides. They talk to each other in the van, and they get out where they need to go, and they're pretty happy about spending only two dollars or one dollar to do that.
Yeah, that's great. And I like that you have that half an hour sort of from your app to where you need to go. I think that's great, and to your due diligence, and really thinking about that, that transportation experience. And so, congratulations again, and your whole team. That really is something, to have this in our portfolio of services at the city of Longmont, you know, with water and high-speed and trash services, and now microtransit. So, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're getting calls from around the region right now, wanting to kinda see how the service is working. So, it's, it's an exciting time, and I think it'll just grow. Other cities will start to see this and start using it. So, we're excited. Thanks.
Commissioner Pollin?
My mic is live?
He can go ahead.
Oh.
Oh, just keep yours on.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're good. Okay. For the microtransit, some of us have heard about it, and I personally heard, saw it on Facebook. Downloaded the app. Haven't used it yet, but keeping it in my back pocket. Some other people have not heard about it. Are there other, are there more plans for further promoting it? And if so, what are some of those ways you're looking at promoting it, so that more people can find out about this wonderful service?
I'm gonna give you a break and let you listen to Kaylee talk you all about that. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Like Phil said, my name is Kaylee. I am a transportation planner on Phil's team, one of the project managers for the microtransit. So, to your question about community outreach and engagement, so we did distribute both physical posters and physical pamphlets to a variety of facilities. We really wanted to focus on those vulnerable users, and those that would benefit from the service the most. First, prioritizing getting outreach to those communities. So, we did do outreach to affordable housing facilities, the senior center, the youth center, the St. Verne Community Hub, multiple different food pantries throughout the city, reached out and leveraged Boulder County as well, reached out to St. Verne Valley School District, making sure that the school district was able to spread the word for those students, and then reaching out to the civic center, the museum, the rec center, and different city facilities. And then, we also had a social media campaign. Like you said, you saw it on Facebook. We also had ads on Instagram, I believe Twitter, the city-owned social media platform. So, it's not great, but I have copies of the ads in case you wanted to take a look at those. You can come up after. You can come up after. I'm happy to share those more. But um in order to continue that that outreach, um we are working with our operator VIA right now. Um to do a combined winter bike to work day and ride Longmont kind of press and outreach event. Um so a vehicle will be at the winter bike to work day station. Um we'll have a bike rack on that vehicle. So folks that are riding their bike to the bike to work day station will be able to practice putting their bike on the vehicle. Um we'll have informational pamphlets and posters and VIA will have some giveaway swag um to talk to folks that stop by our station. And then um it's in the works right now, um but we're hoping to get the mayor or some city council members to do more of a formal press event. Maybe a speech or or something like that um after that, right right after that event. So um we're working closely with VIA's policy and outreach team to put that event together. And then, of course, we'll continue to do um social media outreach. And um Phil and I also have um some meetings, in-person meetings that we're going to. I believe we're going to um the Village on Main to speak to um folks about it. Um I just spoke to it at two Boulder County meetings today. Um so we're continuing to do um those meetings. Um in person and virtual as they as they arise.
Quick question, is the youth meeting your expectations?
Yes, so I have um some stats that I'm happy to share with you and um to answer your question, yes, we did go over these stats with our operator. They were very happy about these statistics. Um but so for the first month of service, that's December ninth through January ninth. We had four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine total completed rides. Out of those rides, that's um comprised of ten thousand six hundred and forty-six miles. Um the average ride distance was three point six miles and the average ride time was twelve point six miles. Um and so looking at, you know, rider and user experience, we had two thousand four hundred and sixty-one accounts created. And then we had um two hundred and eight riders complete five or more bookings. So that number right there really tells us that we have um some some repeat riders. Folks are taking the service more than one time. They like it. They find it reliable and fast enough to use it again. So um those are just high level stats. I have a lot more if you're interested. But um yes, we we met with our um operator, went through some of these statistics and they said that they were really impressed and excited by these numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Phil, a couple of questions for on RTD, the bus service. How are the choices made for either changes or additions to the current routes?
So, a great question, Commissioner. Currently, we just are at the whim of RTD. We have to, if if we have ideas of how routes could change, we bring those to RTD. But typically they'll go through the service planning. They have all the 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 data that they can look at. And make decisions on how they change the system. Now, since we've, I hope everybody knows this, but we as the city buy up. The fare box for the fixed routes, so in doing so, we make those routes free to the user. It's not a very large cost, so it's uh it's it's well worth it for us. And so uh nobody pays to get on to those fixed routes. So in doing that, we've kind of ensured that we're, we used to have a system where um. RTD would look at the routes, find inefficiencies, cut those inefficiencies off or or lower the the time that the the buses would run. And that would lead to what we called kind of that down downward spiral, right? Where we would, then we would hit the next level and people would not take the service because it wasn't as convenient as it was before. So less people were taking it. It was getting worse and worse. And so we're just seeing, we're just watching them trim basically uh off all the edges of our system. And just compressing it into the center. So with the buy-up, we were able to stop that and we have not seen any cuts since then. In fact, during the pandemic, we were one of the few systems that actually stayed fairly level and grew back very quickly. I think because of the free service, but when we wanna make changes, we have to, we have to request them. Uh one of the changes we did make and it was granted was on the regional service, the LD buses to Denver, from Longmont to Denver. And so we do have, uh we only had two early morning services that fulfilled that route. And as of uh January nineteenth, we've got two more buses, so we've doubled doubled our service. I know it doesn't sound great. But it is helping for people who need to get to Denver in the mornings and come back in the afternoons. And there are a couple afternoon runs as well, but if you combine that with the new bus staying service out at one nineteen and I twenty-five. Now we're starting to see um little little better service, but you can see that it's not just RTD. It has to be a blend.
Any thought, for somebody living on the east side, any thought, any possibility of having some bus routes there? And or changes in the times of the bus routes? I personally would love to after work be able to hop on the bus, go to downtown and not have to worry about driving and driving back. But I find that the 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 last routes are too early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, we're hoping to supplement it with this microtransit and it does stop at eight o'clock as well. So we're starting to work with the provider that's not VIA Mobility in Boulder County. It's VIA Transportation that's more of a global company. Uh we're working with that vendor to figure out, is there demand? Because we did run some evening services that went to midnight over the weekends uh in December. So we were able to do Friday and Saturday nights a little longer. So we wanna get that data and figure out, was that well-used? And is it worth us or worth businesses maybe investing in that service? So we're starting to reach out to the business community, specifically, you know, bars and and entertainment establishments that may benefit from this. And say, hey, uh do you wanna put some skin in the game as far as helping us in- increase the service when this might help? Help you uh, you know, get some cl- get some more uh customers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chair Height. Um I was gonna ask a few more questions on micro. I like the app. I haven't put in my credit card yet. Have have you thought about? I know it's not that that easy, but somehow connecting that to Apple Pay or Google Pay where. You could like just double-click your phone and have it grab it out of your, you know, whatever you have, your card is connected to Apple Pay.
Yeah, that is a great question. So the app is developed and run by the operator via transportation. So um unfortunately, the city doesn't have capability to integrate that. But going forward in our conversation with the operator in terms of payment methods, that's definitely something that we could bring up to them in terms of payment integration. I do think there is some complications with that, but it's always worth a a shot to see if we can do something like that, yeah.
And this is, this is a three-year pilot, just to continue on that idea. So we've only really signed up for this for three years. It's about a million dollars a year for us to to afford this. So we've got about a million dollars from RTD for their partnership program. Uh so we were able to get kind of uh RTD's dollars, which was kind of nice to be able to pull some dollars back into the city from them. Uh the city's paying a million and then we have a federal grant that's out there under Representative Nogusa's office. So they've they've uh we we were awarded a million dollars for that as well. So just to say that we've got three years to kind of test this out, so those kind of comments are 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 great to hear. And get back to our provider and make sure that we're really fine-tuning this as we're. As you can tell, we're just out of the free period, so the free period was the first month. So this is the first month that we really have people paying the full amount. We've seen some, it's not perfect by any means and there are some growing pains certainly. And so we're working through those and please give us a couple months to a couple of years maybe to figure some of these out. But the great, great comments to be able to give back to the vendor.
I know it's a pretty small sampling, but out of this short period, have you seen users, are they typically disabled? Low income, just wanting it for convenience as opposed to riding the bus, kind of a mix of them, all of the above or?
From what I've seen, again, I'm kind of, well, I I can't say that I was. I wasn't the first rider, but I really was the first rider. The mayor was the first rider, right? Um but I guess I was the first one on the system. So I've been playing with it a lot to see who's writing and what's going on. And I've just seen a whole mix of from um younger, I younger adults, I should say. Um who don't have access to a car. I talked to a few of them, uh you know, my mom booked this for me. So that I could um get to my job and they clearly didn't have access to a car. Some of them are very quiet, don't wanna talk at all, that's fine too. Um but it's been a whole mix of different um. And I I'm making guesses here, but in different income stratas, different, different um, different demographics. I I I'm just seeing all sorts of, we've seen families, families of five taking the vehicle when it was free. We'll see how that works when it's not.
Right.
Um cuz you do have to, you know, you have to account for everyone who's taking the trip with you, so. Uh so we'll see how that goes, but uh so far really positive feedback and it's been from a variety of folks, uh cross-section of the of the city.
So that initial money from RTD is that kind of a one-time thing? You don't, you see any like ongoing funds coming from them based on our taxing?
We we will reapply for funding as we start to get through the first one to two years of this. We'll reapply for the funding. Uh and talk about some of our successes. There is actually a program similar to this that's runs in Lodentree down on the south side of Denver. And so we've been gleaning from them, different um, different examples or different things that have happened with them and trying to use them. So they've gone to RTD and they've go- they've gotten some more money from this program, so we'll continue. And RTD keeps talking about expanding this program. It only works for them because they do have an on-demand service in town. Nobody really knows about it, nobody uses it. It's called Flex Ride.
Yeah.
And it's um, it's one of those ones where you, we recommend that for folks who want to order a ride in advance. And have that vehicle ready like the next day. It's really a twenty-four hour in advance. It works much better that way. So we're pushing people towards that, but what'll likely happen is that that may not, I hope. It'll probably go down if not disappear.
That's what I would think.
Yeah, with with what we're showing. And I think that's exactly what RTD is vetting on, right, with their investment in this is. Uh maybe this can go away, we can save these dollars and then we'll say, hey, we saved you all these dollars. Can we get some of those back for continuing this program?
Cuz we're still paying RTD for that magical rail that one of these days appear. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Phil for presenting everything, but this is, this is looking really, this is looking really exciting. But I did have some questions on, um do we do any road classification or will road classification be part of the TMP? That would uh as an example have opinions on zoning of the kind of things that can interchange with that road. So things that would either allow for better, you know, throughput of the system. Or things that were specifically designed for more pedestrian access, more walkability, that kind of thing.
Well, we're not, uh we won't be changing any of the classic, I should say we're changing very few of the classifications. I think they'll all stay the same. We really didn't want to change too much of that cuz that was pretty well done in the first place. And that does determine, you know, what Grant's group looks at when they're looking at sidewalks, uh tree lawns, those kind of things. Based on the street and those and those pieces as well. So a lot of the sidewalk infrastructure, a lot of the bikeway infrastructure is determined on on the classification, the road classification. So that will remain pretty much the same in this. What we're trying to do is enhance a lot of those. Because we do have new terminology that's come up since twenty sixteen, including microtransit was not a word that we used very much. And or at all in twenty sixteen in Longmont. And there are a lot of different things that have happened since then. So we're really trying to, again, flip the narrative from what we've heard policy-wise. Is people really do want to, our policymakers really wanna hear more about how we're making it more convenient for walking, bicycling and transit. Maybe at at the um detriment to a bit of people driving. But if you're in a car and you're sitting, you got the heater on or the or the air conditioner on. And you wait an extra twenty seconds to to get through an intersection. And the walker, you know, pushes the button and goes immediately across and continues, uh you know, is that bad? Is that wrong? So that's, those are the kind of things we're, we're kind of tackling with this plan, but the classifications won't, won't be changing too significantly. Yes, the archerials will be the archerials, the the collectors will stay the collectors, so we're not changing that.
Okay, I I was thinking of partially due to in the last meeting, we were talking about the potential for the quick trip and all that. And I was thinking, what does that look like for pedestrian on the north side that wants to cross Ken Pratt? How, what is their like walking distance that has to look like? Are they going like three, four hundred feet to the next intersection? Or are they uh, you know, jaywalking, you know, what what does that look like as far as the TMP goes? Are we addressing any of those sort of things on those like really busy roads for pedestrian crossings?
Well, as that street starts to take on some transit, which we saw in the plan. That'll be classified a little bit differently with the with the transit routes, the fixed transit routes. So that will get more consideration for pedestrian a- pedestrian activity, I believe. And then we just need to figure out how we work within the code to bring those changes along. We can say something in a plan. And that will be adopted by resolution, but we need something that's part of an ordinance, that's a part of law, that can push developers. And so we'll have that conversation next after we hopefully pass this plan, get it adopted.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um my question is, where does electrical, uh electric vehicle charging. Um facilities and infrastructures fit into the TMP?
I would say that we're considering those as far as, you know, the recent laws that were passed statewide. So we're considering those laws as we start to talk about the next iteration of electric vehicle charging. I think it's really pushing toward the multi-use or the multifamily product. It's where we do not have the infrastructure currently, so we're, we're talking about how we can get that integrated. We're considering it in the plan, but again, it's, it's kind of the broader umbrella and we're working with our sustainability uh division of the city. To work in that next iteration of really getting uh some grant dollars to put these different chargers in place. And actually get them in the ground around the city, at the multifamily, the private, on the private property, as well as in public facilities. So we're trying to grow it and we're trying to use the resources we have at disposal to us, which are the grants. To make it uh as cheap as possible for the, or cost-effective for the city as possible. But it's more of a, I guess, a higher level discussion at the TMP level.
Um the other question I have is, how future-proof is this plan? For example, if there were different modes of transportation that comes in, if you're, um, we're gonna talk about e-bikes or electric scooters. Or maybe um self-driving vehicles, like how does that fit into the future proofing of this?
That's a great question. It's a lot of this crystal ball pieces that we don't really understand fully the impact. Uh it's kind of like when we brought in microtransit, we really didn't know what the impact was gonna be until we had it on the ground and started to watch it operate. So we're um, the future-proofing is a perfect way to say that. Is that we're just trying to make sure that we have maintenance plans in place for all of our roadways. So that we at least have that roadway structure in place for for these different types of vehicles as they come along. You know, people tell me, well, did you consider flying cars? It's like, well, how do I, how do I do that, you know? How do I do that with, uh we have our airport and we have uh different things like that. But how do we, how do we consider all the different things that are in the future that people have in their mind as far as what's what's gonna happen? In the next ten, twenty, twenty-five years. And that's really the horizon of our plan. But as, we wanna make sure that this plan can adapt to those things quickly. So we're trying to build in some more, um, the reason why you're not seeing the land use plan with this plan. Is because the land use plan's in pretty good shape as far as being able to adapt to conditions. The transportation element was not, so what we're trying to do is make it more adaptable, more flexible. So as we move forward, we can adapt and 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 kind of redirect as we need to with the plan. And and have it, you know, go to some of these new things that we're not thinking of today.
Thanks.
The light on my microphone is not working, so I have made the technology angry at me, I guess. I'm not really sure who to uh direct this question at, um cuz cuz you were mentioning the land use plan is pretty flexible. And so you're looking at the, to make a transportation plan that's more flexible. Um and I know that, I guess, in envision Longmont, um a lot of their redevelopment opportunities were centered around uh transit corridors. Um with the specific zoning for MUC. Um with the introduction of new bus routes, is there any consideration to how the land use plan might react to that?
Well, we're, again, we're hoping that the land use plan's in pretty good shape right now as far as being able to adapt to that. And we really have set it up so that those areas of change, which are along the transit routes, are able to take along or take on more density. And really be more of a transit-oriented development piece to this. So we're trying to make, we're, we're trying to provide that transit element of the TOD, right? And as that comes online, uh we think there, there will be the market that will allow for more people to be interested in those areas that are close to transit. I think you'll really see that at first in, sorry, Maine in first. So um those, that element is just now taking off. And you may hear more about that from Tony Chacon later when you're talking about the urban renewal area. But uh uh those are the things that we're looking at as far as, we think that the land use is in place. We just don't have that transit element that needs to. We just don't have that transit element that needs to complement it.
Okay. I was thinking more specifically about, you had mentioned the introduction, the possible introduction of 328 and 329 bus routes. Is there anything related to that with land use or is, is the current plan good for that?
Well, that's a great point. We need to check that and make sure that that works with everything. And as they kind of come in the next two years behind this plan, we'll certainly take that into effect or into account because those routes aren't planned to come online until 2027.
Yeah, of course.
And that's when the bus rapid transit is supposed to be, uh, good to go to Boulder. So we'll have that up and running to Boulder by 2027. So all these projects will start hitting, um, the city in the next two years. So get ready folks, uh, there, there's going to be some construction. So we just want to make sure everybody's aware and that you're telling your friends and neighbors and, and families, uh, that the next two years are going to be, are going to be under construction. You'll, you'll always see it on, um, you, you already see it on Kaufman Street.
Yeah.
And so we see that, but the, the big one that's part of the 119 project. And one of the things we kind of have to think about with land uses coming online is the construction of 119 or Ken Pratt Boulevard and Hoover. So there's a flyover planned, a Boulder-bound flyover planned first, from the Colorado Department of Transportation. That whole intersection's, um, going to be troublesome in, in the near future. So get ready, uh, to find some detours and get on other modes of transit if you, or transportation if you can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Height. I believe I am. Does that count? Thank you, Chair. Um, it seems like I might be the only one on this side of the dais who has ridden ride. And I have gone once and I used it because my car was in the shop and it was very convenient for that. So a great use case there. Thank you. Um, I appreciate you clarifying the like, that it follows a specific software route because it definitely didn't take the route I would have taken to get back to, to, uh, my place. But nonetheless, it added about two minutes and I lived. So thank you. I had a, I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Lang's question on payment options. Is credit card the only way to currently pay for, right now?
So I believe Kaylee said that it was credit card, debit card and stored, oh, prepaid or stored value card.
Okay. So you can put in all those options.
Right.
Okay. That's good. Um, just curious, since we also run an electric utility, was it ever considered whether to attach your utility bill account as a payment option?
Uh, it has not because of our vendor, uh, is very specific right now, but it's something we could certainly bring up as we move forward through this process. Great, great point.
Just curious, I think almost everyone has that. And so it'd be kind of a default opt-in there or opt-out if people didn't want to use it.
Right. We also have to account for visitors. Yeah, we have visitors. We have people who work here who, um, don't have that, but they.
Oh, I'm not saying it's the only option, but, but as a, as a default starting point, if you were to just enter your utility bill and, or account number and start it there. Again, that might be too many systems trying to talk to each other at once. So I'm not saying this is, you know, I'm not a software engineer, but.
Well, people are also talking about how could you integrate, um, you know, there's a bunch of different cards out there, right? There's, there's eco-passes for, for RTD. There's, um, cards for the various colleges. I know, uh, I'll just make Tony Chacon really mad right now and talk about the buff one card. I think there's one for CSU too, probably Tony. So he'll be all set. Um, he's, he's listening. He's watching his basketball game. So, um, but, uh, oh, okay. Um, but there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of medium out there that you could easily tie. And, and RTD, quite frankly, RTD is working right now to try to integrate all these different pieces together. So they're doing a lot of work right now to, to integrate this. And we'd love to get onto that and just have one card, one element, one thing that you'd have to use, one, maybe it's, uh, you know, with Apple Pay or whatever, that you could just, you know, make it all integrated into one.
Yeah. Eco-pass is a great idea as well, if that can be integrated, um, since RTD is paying for part of it anyway.
Yep.
Great. Uh, love it. Uh, one more question on this, you know, we, we see a lot of different types of development proposals that come our way and hear all kinds of different questions regarding trafficking and transportation. And, you know, there's only so many arrows in the quiver that we feel like we have. And I know that there's a different part of the process on your end that you're involved with. I'm just curious if down the road it would be worth considering, you know, it sounds like the way that ride is set up, that there are like kind of points of access, maybe it's, it's more fluid than that. But like, there are a few kind of common destinations. And I'm wondering, especially as some of these larger multifamily developments are proposed and built in Longmont, if there would be a way to, uh, either voluntarily or require, uh, future developers to pay for spots within that development, uh, to kind of add another revenue stream as well as also better serve that development more, like more accurately when you have, you know, 200 to 300 units and different, you know, lots. If that's an option that would be considered, you don't have to comment on that officially right now, just put it on the table.
Great. I think I understand what you're saying. Are you saying more points within a development to pick up? Or are you saying, um, maybe have some curb space, dynamic curb space for people to catch vehicles like these or take vehicles like these?
More the former, I think, in this case where, you know, when you have a, a lot, say, like I just walked through the, what's the development that just went in off of, what is that? I guess just south of Oscar Blues, uh, and, uh, west of Hoover, between Hoover and 119. I, I wasn't on the commission when that was approved, so I don't know what the official name of that was. Okay. Well, yeah, it's the bunch of the, the clusters of townhomes, just as an example, you know, there are multiple blocks within kind of a block or a development there. And, you know, you drop someone at the corner there, that's nice if it's able to provide a little bit closer, you know, block to block level service within those kinds of more concentrated developments. I mean, you want, if the goal of, of those types of parts of, uh, of those zones that we have in the city are to encourage more dense, uh, living, uh, and, and habitation, then it would seem that it would encourage more of this, uh, ride share type approach if it's a little bit more convenient. But there could be perhaps a fee for that convenience to add.
Well, we would just temper that with the idea that we need to stay, we need these to be on their route and they may have multiple passengers in them trying to get elsewhere. So it's about, um, not getting too far into these developments, kind of touching the edges if we can and getting out as quickly as possible. So you can get to that next destination. So there is some element of efficiency that needs to be.
That's fair. Yeah.
So we need to.
We would look at the balance there for sure, but, but just, just putting that on the table as, as this hopefully expands and, uh, as we try to get more people using this and make it more convenient. Just a couple of other clarifying questions here. Uh, first, you talked about automated enforcement, uh, and, and like the kind of camera enforcement. Can you just repeat, like, just repeat what you had shared before, just so I can make sure I caught all of that?
And maybe Kami, I don't know if you want to come down and chat more about kind of what we're doing?
Is there speed cameras or red light cameras or?
Well, yeah, I think what we're just saying is that the city council has approved the, the use of, of, of enforcement cameras now.
For speed purposes?
For speed and red light running.
Oh, and red light. Okay. That, that was all I wanted to clarify right now. No, no can opener here.
Yeah, she could get deep into the.
No, thank you. Um, and then my last clarifying question, you mentioned, uh, one of your slides had, uh, car share on there. And the only one I'm familiar with in Longmont, but I could be wrong, uh, is the Colorado car share. And my la- last time I checked, because I used to be a Zipcar member for like six, seven years, um, and, and loved it, uh, before I owned any car. And it was, it was wonderful, uh, to have that option. And I saved so much money not having to pay for all the other elements of what you do when you have a car that you have to manage. How many locations are of the Colorado car share in Longmont are there? Cause last time I checked, I thought there were only one or two.
Yeah, there's only two. And what we're trying to do is expand that. So cars and locations, we're working with, uh, the folks at South Main Station, which is that larger apartment development across from, well, 300 Suns and, um, I'm only thinking of breweries for some reason, but, um, Whibby's, thank you. Um, and so those, those apartment units are very excited about getting a car share piece there that would include the charging station. So we are trying to expand it. We do have some dollars available. We have, there's a sustainability tax that Boulder County has that they parse that, those dollars out. So we're going to work on getting that tax to help us grow our car share program and grow our e-bike share program. Well, start a bike, e-bike share program.
Great. Okay. I have other questions on the car share. I see, running a tight ship here. Uh, the last, the last comment I just want to make, I, I think this is, thank you, thank you, uh, all four of you for coming tonight. I know this is only, I am saving all the questions on biking for, after you walk through that. But, um, I think it's so valuable that we hear not only about the TMP generally, but all of the different elements that you're thinking about. Cause again, we see only a part of the process. And I think it's so incredibly helpful to understand all of the different options and tools that you are able to try to juggle through and think about. And, and I would love for, uh, you know, staff in this commission to keep thinking about kind of how to creatively leverage some of these as we run into more and more, uh, kind of, uh, proposals that are coming into town. So I, I think that can make a world of difference if done well. Thank you.
Commissioner Popkin, I did not mean to cut you off. I was just using the fantastic segue that, uh, Mr. Greenwald used, which was to talk with next about e-bikes. Um, but I'm going to add my own comment, which is that to the extent that this commission can provide some insight, um, into land use, development, projecting proposals that meet our transportation goals, uh, we should hear that. That said, I don't know, Mr. Ortiz, are you talking about e-bikes? You're welcome to come on up and talk to us. We might. Comfort wise, everybody's okay to continue going? Okay. We're going on. Thank you.
So Phil and Kaylee are hard acts to follow. Um, my name is Ben Ortiz. I'm a transportation planner. Thank you for having me. So, uh, this particular agenda item actually encompasses two separate topics. Separate but related, and one of them are e-bikes, you know, trends of e-bikes as well as bicycle parking. So what I did was created two separate short presentations. And then if you'd like to do Q and A after each individual one, we can do that or you can wait till the end, however you want to handle it. Anyhow, so, uh, I thought rather than just discuss trends, which was what my original charge was, I would discuss rules as well, because I think it's pertinent to what's happening here in Longmont. So e-bikes come in three different classes. There's class one, class two and class three e-bikes. Now the class one and class two are very similar in that the motors are governed to 20 miles per hour. But what engages the motor is different. So when a class one e-bike, you have to be pedaling in order for that motor to engage. And then once you hit 20 miles per hour, the motor shuts down. So with a class two e-bike, it's also governed to 20 miles per hour, but you can either pedal or you can throttle. But again, once you hit 20 miles per hour, the, the motor shuts down. Now the class three e-bike is different in that the motor is governed up to 28 miles per hour. And you do have to pedal in order to engage that motor. And it's important because what happens next is with respect to where you can ride these types of, um, e-bikes. So a class one and a class two e-bike can pretty much go anywhere a normal bicycle can go. And so the way, the way it reads in the model traffic code is a person may ride a class one or class two e-bike on a bike or pedestrian path where bicycles are authorized to travel. And this isn't, this isn't the case with class three. So the rules governing class three e-bike usage is, they're, they're greater restrictions. But it, it, it basically is a lot of shall nots. So a person shall not ride a class three e-bike on a pedestrian path unless the path is within a street or a highway. And also unless a local authority permits the operation of class three e-bike on a path in its jurisdiction. And this is worth noting that the city of Longmont has not presently authorized the use of class three e-bikes on the Greenway Trail system here in Longmont. So technically anyone riding a class three e-bike is not permitted to be riding them in the Greenway Trails. The third is persons under 16 are prohibited from riding a class three e-bike upon any street, highway or bike or pedestrian path. I suppose that there are other locations where they can ride a class three e-bike, but, uh, yeah, this pretty much limits where they can go. And then the last, which I think is pretty interesting, is that persons under 18 operating a class three e-bike are required to wear a protect, a, that is meant to say protective helmet. And I think that's, I think that's the only reference to a helmet law we have in the state of Colorado. I've not seen it anywhere else in the model traffic code, which the city has adopted into the Longmont municipal code by reference. And so, um, I, you know, I actually am not an expert in e-bikes. I didn't know much about them or the trends. I think anecdotally, I think we all know that e-bikes are, e-bike usage is on the rise. But I did reach out to, um, the folks at the state and they were able to, to connect me up with some interesting information. And some of what they provided is, is here. So, um, e-bike market size is expected to more than double from 2023 to 2032. And the source for this information is the Colorado Energy Office. Then in 2022, e-bike sales outpaced electric car sales and the U S imported 1.1 million e-bikes in 2022. And though this, this source comes from the Light Electrical Vehicle Association and it's an estimate. But, um, this was reported in a, in a Forbes article in October of 2023. And then the last one on this is that there are currently 163 incentive programs to purchase e-bikes nationwide. And so in Colorado, there are 27 e-bike, uh, incentive programs. And that's second only to California with 46. And this is from the Climate Action Center. So the Colorado Energy Office projects that e-bike track tax credit program resulting, so, um, there's a projection that there will be about 150,000 e-bike purchases through 2032 as a result of an e-bike tax credit program. And that comes from the Colorado Energy Office. And then the, and the next one, 6,455 e-bike rebates were redeemed through the statewide e-bike rebate program through June of 2024. Again, that comes from the Colorado Energy Office. And then, um, Denver has their own program. And since 2022, Denverites have redeemed 9,169 e-bike vouchers through city, through the city rebate program. And the source for that, it was the Denver Gazette. That's all that I have. Um, again, I'd be happy to answer your questions. Like I said, I'm not really an expert when it comes to e-bikes, but, uh, uh, I can do what I can to answer any questions that I have knowledge of. Yes.
I want to ask you quickly, um, how are electric golf carts treated? Are they e-bikes or something different?
Electric golf carts are regarded as electric golf carts. So they are distinct from slow-moving vehicles and they are not permitted on the city's roadways. There is a different definition for, uh, slow-moving vehicles. And it's actually within the model traffic code, but it's distinctive from golf carts.
So to confirm golf carts are not allowed on Longmont city streets?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. What I was interested in knowing, I believe Commissioner Poland next?
Yes, that worked. E-scooters, I'm going to call them e-scooters. Where do those fit in compared to e-bikes?
So e-scooters are, I, I think that there is a separate classification within the model traffic code for, I think they're called the E, E micro-mobility or E, maybe e-scooters even, um, that. even. That part, I'm not 100% sure about, but I do believe that there is a classification for them.
And how does a city differentiate? Does a city differentiate between the two then?
We, we haven't technically. I believe that they are allowed to ride on, as well on paths, on bike paths, bike lanes, even sidewalks. I don't think they're prohibited. I know the model traffic code allows an individual to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. It is technically permitted unless the municipality, the local authority prohibits them. And I think there are very few cities within the state of Colorado that have done that. I believe Denver is one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to shift a little bit back to the stats and away from the rules here. Can you go back to the slide on the number of, in terms of the rebate? Yeah, this is perfect. So the Colorado Energy Office projects that, and this is correct, projects, not protects, is that? Projects that e-bike tax credit program resulting in 150,000 e-bike purchases. So they're saying by 2032, they're projecting there'll be 150,000 e-bikes that have used the e-bike tax credit program? Or in general purchased?
They're, they're, I think what they're saying is that as a result of the e-bike, the various e-bike tax credits, and there are several, the state has one of their own, but that, that as a result of those tax credits, there will be 150,000 e-bike, e-bikes purchased through 2032.
Got it. Okay, that is helpful. Part of the reason why I suggested we have a study session on, on e-bikes and bikes generally is, you know, I think since Invision Longmont was approved, and, you know, since some of the code standards probably have been approved, this is, this is a dramatic change in a major use of transportation here, and, and one that considering we don't have rail service and a lot of, you know, other options, you know, putting the ride microtransit aside and a few other bus routes, you know, I think biking around Longmont is a very, an increasingly popular way of getting around if you're not going to be in a car, especially when it's not during a polar vortex. And when, when I look at this, so I look at the stats, in 2020, just for perspective, I believe the state of Colorado had about 1.62 million automobiles registered. And so if we're assuming 150,000 e-bikes by 2030, again, different time scales here, but that's about 9% of the 2020 amount of vehicles registered in the state of Colorado that will have on, in, you know, not in Longmont per se only, because the 1.62 million vehicles are not just in Longmont as well. But when you think about the distribution across the state, I expect it'll be disproportionately higher in cities with good bike infrastructure, much to our credit there, and particularly probably cities on the front range as well in a greater, in a greater urban area. So, you know, I think this is a really important thing for us to get ahead of and get right, you know, as, as, as a city, in terms of the sheer number of these vehicles that are going to be part of our multimodal transportation infrastructure, or just transportation infrastructure, period, multimodal or vehicular. So, thank you, thank you for sharing that. I'm excited to get into the second part of this as well, but I'll pause for now. Thank you.
Any more, any more questions?
Going to Commissioner Poland's question. What about how are other motorized vehicles such as those motorized longboards or one-wheels classified here in Longmont?
Are they toy vehicles? So the, the state does have a classification for something like toy vehicles, like a skateboard, for example, and we think that the, the one-wheels are lumped into that same classification. So technically, they're, they're not really allowed to be ridden out on the streets, as far as I, I know, and, you know, in your own driveway would be okay. But there are some pretty significant restrictions in terms of where they can be operated. But whether they're enforced, that's a different matter. Bike parking. So let's get into it. So bike parking requirements are found in the Longmont Land Development Code, Chapter 1505-00, and it's a subsection of the parking section that, that we articulate to developers for new developments. So bike parking is required at all new developments, but the number of spaces that are required for bike parking is a, it's a function of the amount of motor vehicle parking provided. And so basically what that, that total is 5%. So if you have, if you have a new, brand-new development that has 100 spaces, that's five bike, bike parking spaces. Now, the inverted U-rack is the required rack that we, we say developers have to install. Each inverted U-rack is equal to two spaces, so what that would mean is they'd need to provide three bike, three inverted U-racks in order to eat, meet that five, minimum five space requirement, if that makes sense. We also have regulations regarding the placement. So we don't want bike parking out in places where, in remote locations, in the backs of buildings where people can't see them. We want them no further from the, than 100 feet from the building entrances, and we want them to be visible from the land uses that they serve. And this is actual language within the Longmont Land Development Code and this particular section. So at multifamily buildings, at least one bike rack is required at each building. This was a minor tweak we made in the last code update when we brought forward parking updates. The old, the old code required a bike parking rack at each multifamily building with eight units or more, and now we're just saying one bike rack at each building. And so, and that, that last bullet point is referenced to that. So again, as I'd mentioned earlier, each U-rack is equal to two bike parking spaces. So why do we use the inverted U-rack? Well, I mean, they're, they're very versatile, but they also provide two points of contact for a bike frame. They're easy to locate and install, and a single rack will fit into tight spaces. And we actually have a detail that shows you, you know, spacing requirements from walls, spacing requirements from the edge of a pad, et cetera, that we give to all new developers when they come in with their development applications, and we also ask them to include that detail within their site plans, so that they have it, and so when the contractors start building, that they know exactly where to put the bikes, the bike racks, as well as the size of the pads. And so what we found, since we have a lot of inverted U-racks throughout the city, is that most cyclists actually will use them as intended, but not always. And I was scouring the internet, and I've been looking around through my own pictures of bike racks that we have installed here in the city, and I actually couldn't find a single one where a bike was not installed correctly. So I took a bike out yesterday, and the one, the picture on the right, and I leaned it up against the rack, and that would be an example of how to not park your bike at an inverted U-rack. Because again, the U-racks, they provide two upright vertical posts that you can lean your bike up against, and it makes it, it makes it such that you can lock your bicycle and protect both the front wheel, the frame, and the rear wheel. And this photo here on the left shows how to properly lock a bicycle. You'll see that you've got the kryptonite lock, which runs through the rear wheel and the down tube, or the, the seat post. And then you also have a cable running through the wheel as well as the front frame. So that's kind of how you do it. Some disallowed bike parking racks are wheel benders, and these are really common in, in schools. And the reason why I think they use them is because you can park a lot of bikes in a very short, very small space. The problem is the way that these are intended to be used. And so you'll see here that, that bikes, they, they stick their wheel through one of these upright slots, while as the name, the informal name of this bike rack implies is that when the bike, if the bike falls over, it may bend the wheel. It won't always happen, but most experienced cyclists do not like to use these racks. And then another common rack that is used is a wave rack, and like the, the picture implies, just don't. But wave racks are designed for you to, to lock a bike at a right angle to the rack, as shown here in this photo, but the racks fall over because they only have one point of contact. And what we also see is, is this picture on the far right, where a person will lock their bike laterally to the rack, and they'll use up half of it for a bike rack that's designed for, in this case, one, two, three, four, five, six, six, seven spaces, six, seven, eight spaces. And this, this particular bike is using up half of the capacity of this particular rack. So we're really discouraged using these for the reasons shown. And then when we, when we do see them, we, we do try to remove them and replace them with inverted U-racks with, when resources allow. So what's missing from the Longmont code, and this, this is something that's been brought to our attention by members of the Bicycle Use Committee, is that there's a lack of cargo bike parking requirement in our land development code, and we admit that. But our code is, is largely the same as what it was back in, when it was first adopted in 2014, and cargo bikes were just not a thing back then. We hardly ever saw anybody using them, but they've become far more popular now. And as you can see by this photo on the left, they, they do look somewhat different than your standard typical U-rack. And then the other requirement that we're, we're missing in our code is covered bike parking, and that's one, one feature that we've, that's been brought to our attention as well. And that's it. With that, if you have any questions?
Hi, Ben. It's me. I'm going. It's nice to see you. It's been a couple of years since I've seen you, so thank you for being here with us. I'm glad that last slide came up, because that's my question. I know you've worked with the city for a couple of years, and so I'm wondering what your take is. Why don't we have covered bike parking requirement in the code?
Well, one, we've never gotten direction to add it. And so, and, and I know that, that the, the, the numbers that were instituted back in 2014 are largely similar, or the same as, as what we have now. But it's not something that we've commonly seen in other codes, and we frequently do look at other codes when, when we're developing our own. I don't know, Phil, did you, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think it is what you just said is, we've, we've never had much pressure to provide the covered bike parking, and when we talked to businesses, it was always, well, we can provide the public parking out front, but for our employees, we're going to have interior bike parking anyway, so can we count that as bike parking? We kind of say no, but it's great that you're going to provide that for your employees. We really want to see the actual rack to fulfill that. 5% is really for the public visitors that are coming, not, not people. It's, yeah, it's kind of similar to providing an underground parking garage, but you all, you know, it's locked. Nobody else has access to it, so it's not really public parking. So those kind of things have kind of pushed us toward the idea of how would we, how would we, how is this made to be affordable for most developers to do bike parking or covered bike parking for all of those different areas? So I, I'm not really stating it too direct, not too succinctly, but just the idea that we could, it does become onerous, and so we've kind of steered away from it until recently.
Yeah, and I think Phil alluded to something that's really important. Any, any sort of regulation that we attach is going to be one that is, that's absorbed by the developer. And, and you may recall that we came to the Planning and Zoning Commission not terribly long ago, I think it was in the summer, about eliminating the minimum parking requirement, giving the developers the opportunity to decide, you know, what's to right-size their parking lots. Well, you know, a, depending upon the market that you're in, a single surface parking space could cost as much as $5,000, when, when you're talking about two, three, 400 spaces that the city is saying that you need to provide minimally, so that that cost is going to get passed on to, it's either the, the consumer, the person going to the store, or, or the person renting the property. And so this is just like any other requirement that we would, we would put onto a developer, they would be passing on that, that cost. Now, it's minimal by comparison to what we would, what we typically see compared to, you know, them facilitating motor vehicle parking, but it's still a cost nonetheless.
So did I hear you right, saying that one car parking space is approximately $5,000? Is that what I heard you say?
That's the recent estimate, but again, it sort of depends on the market. Obviously, you know, Manhattan or LA is going to be somewhat different than, you know, Colorado.
Sure. And, well, for me, it's more of an access, so I like your staged photo of the bike getting stuck in the snow. If you could go back to that for a second. So if I only have a bike, this is where I have to park it. So that doesn't seem equitable to me multimodally. So we're asking people to not only own cars to get around, but also pay for that parking space. So this seems maybe more the direction, because how much is like a storage, a covered bike? That can, is that like, do you know?
I don't, I don't know.
No, Phil? Phil's like, no, I don't know either.
No, but I think it's a good, I think it's a good point.
Yeah. It's, okay. I think Phil wants to say something.
I will say something, I guess. But, you know, the, it is just something that we need to build into the code, if that's what's desired, and, and we certainly have heard that from a number of folks. And when you look at examples like this, you, you just understand the whole
Right.
case of that example is, I mean, the, the car parking isn't covered either, but it is certainly maintained much better than this. So, but to just to provide that simple cover in some of these areas would be pretty nominal.
Well, cars kind of already have their own roof.
Right.
So they're not going to be
So does this bike, right? This bike has its own roof somewhere else, but not here. Those guys parked in the street don't have their roof. They're parked in the snow, and they're tromping through, and, but we're not covering the parking either, right?
Yeah, well, the seat of the car has a roof to it.
Right, exactly.
But the bike does not. And so, and also, there's no, it's not plowed either, so.
That's the biggest issue with this picture right here, which is great.
If it was covered, it wouldn't need to be plowed. So, okay.
And we're working with a different, bunch of different things. We're not just considering bicycle parking covers. We're considering like more covered, more coverage for even waiting for transit. So trying to look at it holistically, that there's a bunch of different things that need to have some type of shelter, especially when we're talking about heat exchange and the heat issues, so.
Yeah.
And, and just storms like this.
Yeah.
So heat and cold.
So are you seeing that from the developers now that they don't have that required parking spaces, and they're saving that thousands of dollars per parking space, that they're excited to do more covered bike parking and transit stops where either more, just create space?
Well, that's again, what we need to, we need to start implementing these into our standards, so people, nobody knows about it. No, nobody's going to build more unless they hear from their customers.
Unless they have to. Oh, so either have to, or your customers are making it, yeah, that's the rub. All right. Thank you for, for giving your two cents on that.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to pick off, pick up right where Commissioner Saunders left off. She and I had a kind of partnership tag team discussion for the Ziggy's proposal that came before this commission. I want to say that was in August, but I could be.
June, no, you're right, August.
I think it was August, sometime this summer. And we were trying to, you know, we didn't have the data to think about how to, you know, they were proposing the minimum. And they didn't have a ton of parking spaces either. So, you know, I think they were technically exceeding the minimum, but it felt, I think it was four, I think it was like four parking spaces to two U racks, I think. And that felt paltry for a coffee shop next to a multifamily housing complex in a fairly denser part of the airport road, Clover Basin nexus. But we didn't know what the right amount was to require there as a condition. And that would have been within this board's purview. And so I have a few questions, first to just kind of clarify what you've gone through and then to think about where we go from here. So just to make sure I heard you correctly, the code for last, the last update for the code that speaks to these requirements was in 2014? Is that correct? Over a decade ago?
Well, the number that establishes the 5%
Yes.
Required, requirement as a function of the motor vehicle parking provided, yes. That was originally passed in 2014. And then we didn't really see a reason to change that number with this last update. I think the only tweak we made to the bike parking was requiring a rack at each multifamily building in a multifamily development.
Can you elaborate on the thought process of staff there of not updating that number at the last code update?
Well, so, so I did development review for quite a few years. And frequently when we get to doing the final inspections, which is usually the parking lot striping, the landscaping, things like that, the building is largely occupied at that point. And so what I found, and I didn't actually do a study, but just anecdotally, I could tell that we were typically providing bike parking in excess of what was actually being used. Now, I think that there was one exception, and this was actually one development that I also site planned, it was the Centennial Park Apartments, which is a mountain view in Paces, right near Skyline High School. Now, they had a very, very high rate of usage for their bike parking. And they also provided bike parking, covered bike parking in cages that was also being used. And the only thing that I can figure is that because of the proximity to the high school, a lot of the younger tenants of that particular multifamily development were riding bikes to the high school. It's the only thing I can think of because it's the only other destination anywhere near there. But I think that just again, anecdotally, we've not heard that that number is not adequate. Now, we could go out and we could, we could count bikes and we could, bike racks and we could count bikes and, you know, we could, we could formally elaborate whether we're on the mark with that number or we're a little low or we're a little high. But so far, we've not heard that the amount of bike parking that we're requiring is inadequate.
So I'm a student of behavioral sciences. And my question is, you know, chicken or egg here? From your professional experience, you know, when we're looking at, you know, I have no reason to doubt any of the information you just shared. The question is, if you build more bike parking and offer different types of bike parking to Commissioner Saunders' question and what you were sharing on the, you know, covered parking options and the cargo options, if you build more of that, does that encourage more use of those types of racks? And almost reciprocally, if you don't have it, does that discourage? Easy softball questions.
Field of dreams, right?
Exactly.
Yes, to both. So one of the things, one of the things, projects that I worked on when I was still in planning school was a citywide bike parking program for the city of LA. And we had about close to $1 million to purchase, purchase and install inverted U racks throughout the 15 council districts. And LA is 400 square miles. It took a long time. But one of the things that I noticed was that a lot of the, a lot of the places that we put racks had none before. And there was one instance, and it was actually fairly close to where I lived. I put a rack, one single rack, next to a really little restaurant. I'd never seen bikes parked there before, ever. And then following the installation of the one rack, we saw four bikes parked to one single rack. So I think the answer is yes. I think that people are very concerned about theft. And so if there's no good place to lock your bike securely, I think people aren't going to ride to a specific destination. However, at the same time, we've seen a lot of racks installed and sometimes they go unused. So is it just a function of, well, at that particular moment, I did not see somebody parked there? And so I'm making an assumption that nobody ever parks there? Well, I mean, this was a point in time, so it's not, I can't say for certain, right? That a rack or presence of a rack is actually drawing people to that location.
Yeah, fair enough.
I'll just add one, one more example of that is that we, with the new Target, it's not new anymore, but the Target when it was new, and when we didn't have, we had parking minimums for commercial as well, we offered parking incentive or parking incentives that you could reduce your parking minimum if you could provide more bicycle parking. So we did that with Target. And I can't tell you how many parking spaces they have. I've forgotten the numbers. But I think they have about 100 now bicycle parking spots. There's quite a few if you look to the south of the entrance. And I think there's additional ones north. But south of the entrance, you'll see a bunch of bike racks. And we just have not, never been able to fill those completely. So there is kind of a, you know, there's a saturation point, right?
Sure.
So you need, to Ben's point, you need to have the bicycle parking where you don't have it, for sure. But then when we kind of oversaturated thinking that, hey, if we provide more parking and let people reduce the number of, if we allow more bicycle parking and reduce the number of vehicle parking spaces, this will automatically fill up. And that's, we haven't seen that necessarily be the case.
Yeah, I respect that tension there. Couple clarifying questions. One, when we talk about covered, that doesn't inherently mean secured, correct? Like, I think the RTD one by, what is that, like Pike or like, it's Hoover and 119, that's like a secured and covered bike parking?
That's right.
Do you have any other installations of secured bike parking in, that's publicly accessible in the city?
There's one at Ethan Kaufman.
Ah, okay.
And that was, is it Boulder County that operates that one? That one's operated by Boulder County.
Oh, they're both, okay.
We do, we have seen that one used quite a bit.
Yeah. Got it. Ben, you made an interesting comment. You haven't gotten direction to add certain elements of this to the code. Maybe this is a question for any of staff. Who would you appreciate that direction from? Is that a question for the Transportation Advisory Board? Is that a question for Planning and Zoning, City Council, amalgamation of all of those?
All of the above, yes. We also have this Bicycle Issues Committee that kind of runs, kind of below the radar a little bit. But they've been very helpful in helping us when we do review of certain projects. And they've come forward and said, is there any way they could come to council on request of council, some of these issues that they're thinking of with, in regard to bicycle and covered bicycle parking?
Yes, Phil's correct. I think that, I think the only body that we can actually take direction from is the City Council. And so everybody else would be a recommending body up to City Council so you can make that recommendation up to City Council, and then they would be the ones to direct us.
Noted. The, I have a couple other, kind of, here's the hypothesis I have. And you don't have to respond to it right now, but I want to put it out for the commission to think about. And that is, we have 10, we have 10 different zones, I believe, in Envision Longmont. Is it 10 or is it 12, if you include like the Greenways, Parks, and Civic?
Zoning districts?
Zoning districts, yeah. We have 10 or 12, we'll work with, let's assume 10 for these purposes. 12, okay. Let's assume 12 here. We have 12 different zoning districts in the city of Longmont. And, you know, we currently have a blanket proposal of 5% of the vehicle spaces across, irrespective of zone, irrespective of use. And, and my hypothesis is that, you know, to Phil's point before, maybe we don't need 100 spaces at Target. Maybe we don't need 100 spaces everywhere. But maybe we need a more proportional system or distribution in the code that is, and you know, it doesn't have to be a granular 6.5, 8.2, like, we don't have to go that granular, but maybe there's some different types of bike parking minimums that we could consider a slightly different standard for if it's multifamily residential versus light industrial. If it's Greenway, Parks, Recreation versus single-family residential. You know, I think that that would be a potentially reasonable way to get at like both the Field of Dreams concept, right? If you build it, they will come, but only if there's enough demand to really make that happen. And I think that there are probably some zoning districts, you'd mentioned the tension of like public accessible versus employer accessible. And I think that's a really useful question to consider. I don't have an answer for you right now on that. There could be some zoning districts where covered or sheltered or secured parking as a code requirement could make sense versus others that are not. And so rather than kind of take a sweeping axe and say, well, 5% is insufficient, hasn't been updated since 2014, we take a little bit more of a nuanced toolkit to this and pair it with the different zoning districts that we have. So not going to ask for a proposal per se, and maybe you need official direction from a policymaking authority. But I think that would be something that I think the Transportation Advisory, the Bicycle Issues Committee, and perhaps Planning and Zoning could also think about, especially as it relates to the different parts of Envision Longmont and what we're expecting to go where. That to me would be a way to say, oh, we're building a new coffee shop. We're expecting a lot of different types of uses to get there. Oh, and it's in a multifamily zone, which that one was. We should be expecting more different types of uses beyond the standard, even if it was a drive-through, which it was, even just the standard vehicles and people crossing the illegal berms. So we're getting really specific on this one and just burned in my memory. I think that would actually be really constructive because, you know, in that case, and I will pick on that proposal just for this moment, you know, to the applicant's credit, he said that they would be willing to add more if the demand was there. And I think we run into that Field of Dreams issue, that catch 22. And it means you don't necessarily have the optimal location for the parking in terms of visibility, security, possible coverage if you're trying to do that. And so, you know, if you add it in later, you know, that's a challenge too. So I have one Band-Aid solution to that, which is, we have EV ready spaces where you set up some of the wiring, but you don't build the charger. You could do bike rack ready type of an addition into this code as a concept where that is, that is an opportunity to add in. It's built in, it's planned thoughtfully in terms of the visual security elements, the accessibility to it, you know, is it blocking aside? You're not going to block a sidewalk if you don't have any more space to put a bike rack. So do we, do we think about like, this is U-rack ready, perhaps, for expansion? Perhaps that's the way to go. Perhaps there are different thresholds based on the zone. But I think that would be something that would be really welcome as we look at these trends, not just, I mean, we didn't even talk about regular biking trends today, but, you know, the e-bikes are the most dramatic change in kind of personal mobility transportation in Colorado, I think, in generations. So when we look at where we're going there, if, you know, 10% of the motor vehicles in 2020 on the road registered in Colorado will be equivalent to the number of e-bikes that we have in 10 years, in eight years, seven years, we should be ready for that. And e-bikes are heavier, they're harder to cart up staircases, they often have cargo attachments or like family care attachments or trailers of some kind. We should be ready with appropriate parking that is well-sized to support that. So it's, I would love to hear from fellow commissioners on this, but that's where my head's on at this. And I'll just offer one more tidbit that we don't have to talk through, but in case you're not familiar, the organization Sustainable City Code offers different chapters and examples of kind of different cities trying different things with their code with regard to sustainability. There is a chapter on bike mobility. Maybe you've already, maybe you are familiar with it, but it does have some examples like, I think Davis, California and was it Madison or, yeah, Madison, Wisconsin, they have some opportunities and formulas where it's like spaces per dwelling or spaces per bedroom in some cases too, thinking about the number of people. I'm not saying that's the right standard here, but maybe it isn't necessarily tied to vehicular parking spaces either. So just wanted to kind of open up that can of worms, not to solve today, but as something that I think could be really productive to think about, given how valuable the biking infrastructure you're trying to build out in the TMP and I think is expected in the front range of Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you.
Currently being shared by Jacob or Commissioner Arment. So Commissioner Popkin was talking a lot about the challenges with predicting and building appropriate bike infrastructure. And something I know with our traffic, especially with new developments, we see a lot of very detailed traffic volume, traffic studies for every development proposal. Do we do any data collection on bike traffic volumes or that sort of thing?
To my knowledge, we have not. And I don't know whether the pneumatic tubes that count motor vehicles will also count bicycles. Phil, do you, do you know the answer to that?
The answer is not well.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we have, there's some capabilities out there to do some counts. Most of all of them involve cameras at this point. And putting cameras up into neighborhoods is frowned upon by many. So, and so we just, we, we do it along, we've tried it along trails. And we've had infrared, you know, counters along trails. So that's the, that's the best we've done, but those have had their own issues, so not well.
Okay, so we really don't have a good way to model bike traffic to inform future development?
Yeah, the other alternative is to have somebody add a trailhead with a little clicker.
Which?
And which, which is how some people do it, actually. But it's very labor intensive.
Definitely. Okay. I think that's the answer for my question.
It seems to me a lot of these are on private property. So what tools does the city have to make sure that they're not neglected and are maintained? And for example, if the property's been turned over, but then it's been overgrown by bushes or it gets damaged and removed and not replaced? What's the long-term of this?
Well, the planners are not code enforcement, obviously. So we don't, well, we won't go to a development that was approved 10 years ago and make sure that it's in compliance. Typically, what happens is it follows a complaint. And to give you a good example was one, one of our grocery stores here in town, I won't name them, where some cyclists were complaining about the lack of bicycle parking. So I actually did go to this grocery store. I took the approved site plan with me. And sure enough, there, they were short on a couple of racks. So I met with the, I met with the store manager and, you know, I told him, I said, look, you guys are not in compliance of your site plan. And, you know, this is it. And this is where it shows the bike parking. And so you're shy of a couple, couple bike parking racks. And we really like you to get them installed. And so, you know, to their credit, they went ahead and did it. It took a little bit of prodding, but generally it, there's a, there's needs to be communication on the part of the public to inform the city that these, these things are, have gone, have gone and deteriorated or been removed or... have gone and deteriorated or been removed or, or anything else damaged. In which case then we can get code enforcement involved if necessary. But we usually would talk to the owners and ask them, you know, politely, if they would go ahead and bring their plan up to, to what it was originally approved. And if not, at that point, then we can get code enforcement involved and they would write a letter and then it would escalate from there.
Oh, very good. Ben, so we have national standards for car traffic so that when a new development going in, depending on the type of development it is, they run the numbers based on this national standard that says so many trips per this type of unit. Is there anything like that? First of all, anything like that for bicycles, for trip generation?
Not that I am aware of. Phil, do you know of any source?
No, it's more based on every city has basically a different mode share. So like Boulders is very high for bicycles. So they, they count it as a percentage of the share of the mode.
Okay. For parking, so when we had a parking minimum, that was based, was that based on some national standard?
Yes, so ITE Parking Generation, they, they go out and they will observe different. So they might go out and observe 20 multifamily developments. And they will say, based on those 20 multifamily developments, we're seeing X number of cars parked on average in these lots and versus certain number of parking spaces. So they're able to come up with a ratio. And, and so that does exist.
Which means basically our bike minimum was tied to, used to be tied to the car minimum, which was tied to a national standard. Now that we're removing the minimum, should we still have some kind of bike minimum? Because it may be unfair to tie a bike standard to a car standard that we no longer have a standard against.
Right. So, correct. So in our parking code, we don't have the minimum parking requirement for motor vehicles. That's gone. We now have the parking maximums. We still have retained a minimum parking requirement for bikes, for bike parking. So a minimum of at least one bike rack is required. But generally what we've seen, and we've had quite a few of these developments come in since we've eliminated the minimum parking requirement for motor vehicles, we've not seen any developments come in with zero parking. So they're still providing 50, 60, 100, 200 spaces depending. So the multifamily developments, they're still providing plenty of parking.
Yeah, but not all multifamily developments are equal. So I guess for me, the other thing I had a question, what is the definition of multifamily? Is, let's say a townhouse a multifamily?
It depends. So the definition for multifamily would be five attached units.
Okay.
And anything less than that would be like attached single family, like townhomes.
Duplexes.
Duplexes, attached single family. But five or more turns it into the multifamily rate.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking where I live in the townhouse. And we're six, but I don't remember in front of any of them. Of course, it was built way before we put that standard in for multifamily. But basically we're saying one per multifamily. A multifamily could be a five unit or it could be as big as, what, a 40, 50 unit, right? Me, I'm just thinking maybe down the road, whoever thinks about this thinks of per unit rather than predation of a multifamily. So that's just my thoughts. But thank you for, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, those are very good thoughts. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, five minutes over.
Hello.
Hello, we're back in session, talking about urban renewal authorities, or authority.
Yes, so my name's Tony Chacon, I'm a redevelopment manager in planning and development. I want to apologize first off, right at the outset here, after such stimulating presentations you just had, this is going to be dry as heck, man, so trust me. So what I'm here to talk about is to let you know about urban renewal, because I'm sure you've heard the terminology, how it applies to Longmont, and how it applies to three entities, one being the Urban Renewal Authority, the second being the city, or the municipality, and the third one is the Planning Commission. They have a statutory role, but it's very explicit, so we want to bring that to your attention, okay? So, let's just go about urban renewal and Colorado state law. So, urban renewal is directed by state statute. It is not directed in any capacity by the city charter, or any of the city code. So, when you're looking at how it operates, the Urban Renewal Authority has to operate under the state statutes and its allowances. It serves as a governmental entity unto itself, so again, the city of Longmont will not run the Urban Renewal Authority, it is a separate entity, they effectively run it under the state statutes under their own rules and bylaws, they establish their own bylaws. So, the city, under the state allowances, created the Urban Renewal Authority, it's known as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, we shorthand it to LURA, L-U-R-A, and it was created in 2005. And actually, it was created relative to the lower downtown and Sugar Mill area, that was the first area that the city wanted to drive forward with some improvements. The authority is created, there are 11 members, so state statutes say you have to have at least 11 members, up to 13. In the case when the city council and mayor sits in a capacity, it is 11 members. So, seven of the members right now are the city council and the mayor. There are three other members representing various districts. One is a school district, two is a county government, and the third one are a collective of other special districts, they have to get together and pick somebody. So, anybody heard of metro districts, general improvement districts, all these other districts? I think in Longmont, we're somewhat lucky, because I think we have maybe five, some jurisdictions have upwards of 30, like Aurora. When I worked Aurora, I believe, I think there was actually 35 districts that they had to get together, which they never did. And then, the last person is, what the statute requires is that you can't have an even number, and so, the mayor can appoint an individual from the community, and to tell you the truth, can be from anywhere, there is no requirement they be a part of the community, but it does require the consent of the city council for them to be appointed to that board. And, one important element, the authority is not a taxing entity, so they cannot institute a property tax mill levy against any properties within this urban renewal area, or the city itself. So, their money comes explicitly from revenues that are actually generated from the existing districts and their mill levies. So, what is the statutory, statutory role of the city in urban renewal? So, number one, any area that they intend to designate as an urban renewal area, or possibly designate, they have to conduct what is known as a blight condition survey, and it's very explicit in the statutes, there's, I can't remember, 14, 13 or 14 criteria that have to align, and out of that, they have, an area has to have at least four of those criteria before it can be designated as an urban renewal area. Now, you might ask, what are some of those conditions? Well, I think you've all seen, like boarded up buildings, and buildings that have caught fire, that's one thing. Another thing could be the infrastructure is either inadequate, or is of age, another one could be it be totally lacking infrastructure, or it could have environmental conditions on it, so there's a multitude of conditions that can be applied. And then, the city council, it's their responsibility, it's their responsibility then designate an urban renewal district, and so they have to make a finding that the area was blighted first, and then they can designate that district. And just for your information, the city currently has two urban renewal districts that were established in past years. The council is also responsible for the preparation, and, or I should say, the city is responsible for the preparation of an urban renewal plan, and the city council has to approve the urban renewal plan. And here's the Planning Commission's role. The role is limited to the review and recommendations as to the urban renewal plan's conformity with the community's general plan, or comprehensive plan, in this case, it would be Envision Longmont would be the plan. So, that's the only thing the Planning Commission gets to do as it pertains to the plans that would come forth. Now, I'll tell you, there's two means that plans could come your way. Number one is if a new urban renewal area were to be created, that would require a plan to be prepared, and that would come your way for review, and your recommendations. The other way, on our two existing urban renewals areas, if we proceed with what is known as a substantive change to the plan, which usually means that you're going to start collecting tax increment, you're going to change the boundaries of the district, or there is a major change in the land use you originally intended, in that case, you do have to do an amendment that goes through the same process, and then, then would come to the Planning Commission for that recommendation, and then eventually approval of the city council. So, LURA's responsibilities, so here's a bunch of things here, so they can do quite a bit of stuff, but most probably the most important thing that they can do is generate revenue that can be reinvested into the community in those areas that are designated as urban renewal areas. Now, the way that works is the monies generated in that urban renewal area have to be spent back in that urban renewal area, you can't take money from that particular one and move it to another one, nor can you spend it in other parts of the city carte blanche, it has to be very specific. There is one provision that allows expenditure outside those boundaries, and that is if it is, it's necessary to provide some level of support to that district. So, for example, you need to extend a major water line that's two miles away from the district, that most likely would be eligible for that expenditure. So, the LURA, they implement the urban renewal plans, they collect and invest what are known as tax increment proceeds, and other TIF, and other non-TIF revenues, so they can actually accept grants, they can take loans, they have a lot of capability to raise money where a city government necessarily does not have that same capability. They can take on debt, or they can work a deal with a developer, for example, to give him direct allocation of funds to cover the improvements that he might be doing. They can partner with the city and others, nonprofits, for example, to make improvements within the districts, they can enter into public-private partnerships with the private sector, and that's where you will find sometimes, that the city will work with a developer, and then the city contributes money from, or I should say, LURA would contribute money towards that project. So, it wasn't a LURA project, but South Main Station is a good example of a public-private partnership with a developer to get that project done, where the city at that time put money into that project in addition to the developer. Acquire property for improvement and development, or development, and an important piece to this is, they actually have the ability to condemn the property, if needed, but, it does require consent of the city council to proceed with condemnation. And you would say, well, why is that different than what the city can do, because they can condemn property too? Well, the difference being, an urban renewal authority condemning property has a major latitude in how they then develop that property. If the city condemns it, it has to be for a public use, and so that's where the, that's where you will see the Urban Renewal Authority in the city working collectively, possibly on an acquisition through condemnation, if necessary, just by that mere fact. So, the authority can own and operate public facilities, and it can provide resources and support to businesses, so it's not just about developing necessarily, it's about investing back into those areas. And so, some urban renewal authorities, what they do is they actually create facelift programs, they might give direct incentives to attract certain types of businesses and so forth. So, what are tax increment funds? First of all, they're not new taxes, and I think that's an important thing to remember, they're revenues that are generated from the development itself, and so the image there kind of shows you how that works. So, the red line stair step there is what's known as a base value, so when you initiate the tax increment clock, whatever taxes are being collected in that year are continually provided to the various taxing entities, and are also increased annually for basically inflation, is what it's about. The green line there shows you the development and what it values that at, and that is where you get the increment, because they're paying more taxes on the new development, and that money can come back to the authority to help on investment. So, another element of that, this too, is that the authority, to get that tax increment, they have to negotiate with the taxing entities, that's a state law, and so typically, it's very rare that the authority would get 100% of the tax increment, particularly with school districts, and so therefore, it's negotiated out, and then you try to marry up whatever your need is relative to what the tax increment is. And it's 25 years, once you start the clock, you only get to collect that money for 25 years. After that period, all those monies thereafter would go back to those various taxing entities. Some benefits, it's effectively development pay in its own way, because it's the revenues that are being generated by development that otherwise may not have been built in that particular area. It improves distressed areas attractiveness for further private investment, so not, it could attract people that are willing to do a development themselves without any incentives. It improves the health and safety and welfare for residents' businesses, levels the economic playing field with greenfield development areas. And I can tell you right now, usually in urban renewal areas, land costs alone, combined with the cleanup requirements on some of these properties, makes it well, much more expensive than if you go buy some farmland out on the periphery, so you can offset that. And then, it improves the economic prosperity in the district, of course, and then hopefully for the city in its entirety. So, I mentioned the two urban renewal areas that are currently in place, the first one there on the left is the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal District, that was the first one created in 2006. You will notice that the district actually includes those properties outlined in red, and you would say, well, they're not contiguous. Well, there's nothing says that the properties have to be contiguous to be within an urban renewal district. You may ask, well, why was it done in this case? Well, that is because, back at that point in time, the city had an interest in possibly redevelopment of the sugar factory. So, yes, the sugar factory's been talked about for many years, and as far back as 2006, relative to this plan. And then, the one on the right is the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal District, which effectively was the village at the Peaks redevelopment project, although, there's the, that area outlined in blue represents one of the TIF districts, and the rest of that area, there is the opportunity to go ahead and do some additional TIF districts, if desired. So, with that, I'd like to thank you, and I don't think there's any time for questions, this passed my bedtime, but, but I know you have some, don't you?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and I'm going to ask the same question that I asked last week, and I wish, Phil, we're still here. Can we get a link to the copy of the slides?
Oh, yes, we can make those available to you, yes.
And also, the other two presentations as well?
Yeah, we can provide the last two as well.
I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into these, and it's just really nice to have them at my home.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
More? Mr. Popkin?
I knew that was coming.
Thank you, Chair, is it pronounced Tony, am I saying that correctly?
I don't know.
Thank you for the overview of this, it seems like, one, you know, our standard role is fairly well represented here, making sure that whatever plans come forward here align with Envision Longmont, is there anything that's related to the planning, you know, the other thing that we usually consider are the development review criteria? And I guess what I wanted to ask is, is that relevant at the stage when urban renewal plans come through, or is that more of like a, I don't want to say concept, is it more like a just, oh, no, annexations come with a concept plan too? Is there anything, any other process that we see that's like this, where it's just Envision Longmont, that is, or the comp plan that's considered, or is this a distinct process where the urban renewal plan itself is just a different animal?
It's a different animal, again, because it's created by state statute.
Yeah.
And so that's why it's, you effectively cannot step outside the boundaries of that, you'd be in violation of the statutes accordingly, so try to keep it within. So, what it does allow, though, is if you do not feel it is in alignment in some capacity, that's where you can offer recommendations as to bring it into alignment with the comp plan.
Gotcha, and so the plan would be coming from whom, the urban renewal authority?
No, it actually will be coming from city staff.
Gotcha, okay, so...
Again, that's, it's a function, the plan itself is a function of the city government, I know, it's real confusing, you know, state legislatures, it can be...
I'm just trying to get the web here, so, so the, the city can create an urban renewal authority?
They already did.
They already did, yeah, but hypothetically, like in the grand scheme of things, yeah.
Yeah.
City created, we can speak in present, the city created urban renewal authority, that is now its own entity governed by state law.
Right.
It can direct city staff, though, to develop an urban renewal plan, is that correct?
No, it can make recommendations on areas that could be given consideration for an urban renewal designation.
Got it, so then staff develops a plan for those specific areas?
Well, council would first have to agree to give that evaluation, which then they would initiate the blight study for that area.
Back up for a second, so council would have to agree with what?
With proceeding with evaluation of that particular area for designation.
Got it, so after, after the urban renewal authority sends it to the city council, and city council says, yeah, we agree with this direction, that then goes to staff to develop a plan for, staff then sends...
The urban, the blight study first, you can't proceed with plan until you get the blight study affirmed first.
Thank you, yes, so blight study, then city staff, after the blight study is approved, city staff can create a plan, that would then come before the Planning Commission to make sure that it aligns with Envision Longmont?
Right.
Of course.
Who approves the blight plan?
Who approves it?
Yeah, how does that get reviewed, approved, or the city council just makes a determination?
Yes, just city council...
That's a determination.
Yeah, so they'll make, so the blight study is usually conducted by either cities, it can be done by city staff, or a consultant, and then that's just presented to the city council with its findings, and makes a recommendation as to the determination whether or not blight conditions exist, but then it's incumbent on the city council, under a resolution or ordinance, to, to determine that blight conditions do exist, and therefore, they intend to create the urban renewal district.
Now, I'm going to say something stupid, you might not know the answer to that. My, the question is, to challenge that, is that a Rule 106 action, Colorado Civil Procedure 106, which allows someone to challenge an otherwise non-reviewable determination by a government through a certain court proceeding, is that how that would be challenged? The city's determination in an area is blighted, I don't see any other, in what you outlined, any other way for that to be...
I'm sure, because it's all statutory, if there's a provision in the statutes, I assume somebody could pursue that route, it's very rare, though, because it's very hard to, again, the survey doesn't say that every piece of property has to have a condition on it, it says the area that you create the boundary, you can, you have to show four conditions, so there could be one on this property, one on this property, one on this property, and two on this property, and then the rest of them don't have blight?
Yeah.
But what this does, it's still, it's still in a hearing process, so persons can object, and can ask that they not be included in the urban renewal district.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, Chair Height, that was a good tangent, I appreciate it. So, in this process, so, so let me ask you, let me, let me take a step back for a second, this is really helpful information on the process, it sounds like there already, there are two urban renewal authorities set up in Longmont?
No, two urban renewal areas.
Areas, thank you, the other URA, two urban renewal areas with one urban renewal authority, and, why are we talking about this now? Like, is, are you going to be bringing us something as a commission in like, you know, a month that we're going to be like, oh, we got to review this and make sure it aligns with the comp plan?
There is high probability that you will have an amendment to the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan before you for, for review. We, the idea is to start the TIF clock on a small area within the existing urban renewal area, and so therefore, we have to do the plan amendment, and we'll have to go through the rigorous hearing process.
Got it, and a sense of timeline on that?
I would say most probably within the next... Well, he, you know, he knows you have, he's always telling me you have a crowded agenda, so, most probably, I'd say possibly 45 to 60 days?
Okay.
Somewhere in there for that one, and there's a possibility of a second one as it pertains to the, the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan for a redevelopment area that's where the old Walmart used to be. So, those are the possibility, two of the possibilities coming forward here in the near future.
So, this is, this is very timely for the Planning Commission here, and...
And that's one reason we wanted to get to you, to understand how the Planning Commission can fulfill their role in this capacity.
Yeah, and honestly, I appreciate that, I think it's helpful for us to digest this, and then be able to look at the plan without having to understand this entire process, and even though our role is pretty straightforward in this... And even though our role is pretty straightforward in this, understanding how it relates to the comp plan, just understanding what this broader journey is that you, Grant, and other staff have been going through.
So let me point out, so you asked about, you know, development and stuff like that. If a development were to occur in which the Urban Renewal Authority was a partner, does not mean, it does not go through the standard city review processes. So a development itself could still come through the planning, to the Planning Commission from that standpoint. So I just want to let you know, it doesn't take development away from the city governance. It still falls within city governance.
I still remember the, the tower on top of the movie theater as it came before us as part of the renewal of, of the Twin Peaks Mall. My question is, the twenty-five years obviously started in some portions of some of these redevelopment areas. When you look at the one that might be coming up for the southeast Longmont provision, does that start a new clock or is it already in the clock?
No, so actually, right now, we only have one TIF area where the clock has started. That was at the Twin Peak Malls.
Okay.
For the Village of the Peaks. So that's most probably, what, ten years in now, somewhere in there?
Can you put the map back up?
Oh, sure.
The previous slide, I think it was.
So that's the only one where the clock has started?
Right, so the area in blue, which is the Village of the Peaks, right? But the rest of that area currently not tipped. So the way it works is you can actually create TIFs at different times, subject to amending that particular urban renewal plan. And what happens is the day the city council approves that plan is when the TIF clock starts for the twenty-five year period.
And so each urban renewal area isn't necessarily under a plan yet, or is it?
It, there is a, existing plans on each of them. And then they just are just amended to reflect the changes you're proposing.
So in creating a quote "TIF area" with inside that?
Yes, that's basically what happens and the ability to capture that TIF, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Pollin?
So I believe then Commissioner Height and I were around when the TIF was created. So in 2009, as you know, the URD was created, but then the TIF.
You're right.
Was in 2014-ish.
I think 2012, I think, somewhere in there.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it came after, it wasn't a, that was actually per an amendment to that plan at the time, yes.
Okay, it's working.
Yep, I'm on.
So currently, we only have one TIF area.
Right.
TIF, but there's only one urban renewal authority. So if we were to create a second TIF area, would revenue be shared between the two areas? Or how, how does that work?
So the revenue, so if we looked at the Twin Peaks Mall, for example, if we came in and created a second TIF area, that revenue could still be expended in the entire urban renewal area. It doesn't have to be spent within the TIF area. It just has to be within that urban renewal area. So, yeah.
Could it be expended, like, could revenue from the Twin Peaks URD be spent in the southeast Longmont URD?
No.
Okay, so it has to stay within that URD?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. I think that was the only question I had. Thank you.
How long's the TIF on the Twin Peaks Mall going to go? Is, that's still?
Uh, that, that will go, well, the existing TIF will go until the bonds are basically paid off.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think right now, they're still projecting another fifteen years before the bonds will be paid off.
And a new potential TIF area in that same URA or D, that would include the old Walmart and Hobby Lobby in that area there as well?
That's the area we're possibly looking at, yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, let's open another can of worms here. If there is an annexation required within an urban renewal authority, what is the role of the Planning Commission in that?
An annex, sort of, like the Sugar Mill?
That would be one example, right, where, where there is land and it's not part of the city.
Yeah, so you can't, you cannot establish an urban renewal district outside its jurisdictional boundaries, the city's jurisdictional boundaries. So in that case, the annexation would have to come first. That same evening, the council could create the urban renewal district or approve a plan that expands it. So you just can't bring it into the district or create a new district for that particular piece of property until it's actually annexed into the city.
Got it. And so for an annexation process, that would follow a, irrespective of the urban renewal authority, that would follow the standard city's annexation process? That would go through the Planning Commission with a concept plan, I believe, right? And have to meet all of the typical annexation code requirements. Is that correct, Grant?
Generally, yes. There is the exception for unilateral annexations.
That would mean if the city were to initiate the annexation on its own?
Correct. Then there would not be a concept plan and it wouldn't go through Planning Commission. But in general, the majority of annexations petition-based, yes, would go through the standard procedures.
And the, the city can initiate effectively if it's an enclave. So if it's not an enclave, it would have to go through the, go through the standard annexation process. But there is the other option, if it is an enclave, the city can unilaterally annex those, those properties.
And Grant, just to clarify, you said if the city unilaterally annexed something, it wouldn't come through the Planning Commission at all?
Correct.
Interesting.
In that process for unilateral, it essentially just goes straight to council.
What would, so then if there was a proposal for development on that site after the annexation unilaterally, then that would still go through the development review process?
Correct. And the typical applications would come before.
And our role would vary as the commission, if it's a major minor or whatever?
Correct.
Yeah, again, it would still go through the standard planning processes, zoning, site plan, whatever it might be.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify, like, how different this process is for certain aspects of that. Good.
Commissioner Mark? Oh, thank you back, hon.
One clarifying question. It looks like in the southeast Longmont URD, is there a piece of unincorporated Boulder County within that URD?
No, so the blue shade is what you're referring to?
Yeah.
No, so that's, again, when the, the urban renewal plan was created back in 2006, they actually defined not only properties within the city, but identified properties outside the city that could be brought into the urban renewal area in the future upon annexation. So the blue area there is that, is effectively the Sugar Mill properties. And so the intent at that time was to bring or annex those properties into the city. And at that time, the plan would be amended to annex it into the urban renewal area too.
Oh, no, sorry. I was talking about that bit, south of First and east of Main. There looks to be a little blue shaded area.
Oh, so that's an unincorporated parcel?
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
So is that an enclave within the URD or is that within the?
That's an enclave. It's currently not in the urban renewal district because it's not in the city.
Okay. Okay, that.
Don't ask me how that occurred.
I was also going to ask, so if development was to take place within the URD, so we obviously have the applicable city codes and the comprehensive plan and the URD has a separate plan, do we need to consider that at all as this board or is that completely separate?
The.
There was, the plan, the URA plan, right?
Well, yeah, see, but you would, the urban renewal plan is not going to stipulate specific types of development at certain locations or anything. It's just going to be broad-based, what types of uses we'd like to see in the area. So once, that's where you will weigh in if it's in compliance with the comp plan. And thereafter, the urban renewal authority will use that for implementation, which effectively is going to say, we're going to pursue this type of development and provide incentives for these types of developments. But then again, at that point, we find a developer that wants to build something, they're going to go through the standard city processes at that time. They would have to be in compliance with the comp plan, they'd have to be in compliance with the zoning and so forth.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
I had a question. Does a developer have to go through the urban renewal process if their development project is within a URD?
No.
Okay.
But the urban renewal authority will capture any increment from that project.
Regardless.
Tax revenue, regardless.
Regardless, yeah. So any development, regardless of they participate with the authority on a development, that money is still captured by the authority.
Does that trigger the TIF?
No, that's, once the TIF is triggered. If development occurs outside that TIF area, that money goes to the various taxing entities still.
Because I kind of think in the southeast area, we approved something recently that I know has gone forward and.
Second and Martin?
Yeah.
Okay, so give you the, so. One reason that we are looking to do the amendment rather quickly as it pertains to southeast urban renewal area is because the first TIF we're proposing is that upper enclave there, that red area within which that project is located. And the rules are such, even though it's under construction, the base valuations are 2024. So we start the clock this year, we set the base valuations, what it was previously, and then we're effectively capturing the TIF from the new project, even though it is well under construction. So it's a timing issue as to capturing TIF.
So that's what's coming quickly.
That's most probably the one that's going to be coming most quickly, yeah.
Interesting. Commissioner Popkin?
Thank you, Chair Height. Yeah, so timing really matters with this, right? And is, is part of the chess game, if you will, of trying to get all of these pieces and all of these processes in a, in a row. So even though the Planning Commission's role is fairly straightforward for, you know, urban renewal areas, then, you know, we follow the standard development process and annexation, unless it's a city-initiated one. The Planning Commission plays a key role, timing-wise, in kind of keeping all of this moving forward.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you're going to be a critical piece of the equation. So again, it's not intended to say you have to rubber stamp the plan if you have various recommendations to tighten it up or make it more in compliance. I think that's something you definitely would want to contribute to or give that information to the city council accordingly.
Yeah. Great. And just to clarify, in that role, for that kind of a process, Planning Commission is recommending body, correct?
Yeah, effectively, yeah.
Recommending to council.
That it's in compliance, yeah.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. This is a lot of work, clearly, and quite the journey, so thanks for giving us the overview of that.
We're going to let Mr. Chacon go home, go to sleep.
I've been asleep this whole time. I just didn't know if you realized.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Who? We were having a good time. Thank you again. Moving on. The next agenda item is whether or not there are items from the commission to share with one another. I think Commissioner Popkin, well, wait a second, no. Commissioner Pollin is up first.
Maybe I'm stealing his thunder, but I just want to thank or congratulate Commissioner Popkin on becoming Councilman Popkin. And thank him for all his contributions over the last two years. We'll miss you. I guess maybe we'll see you at some point, but congratulations.
You're here. Thank you. Commissioner Popkin?
No thunder stolen. Thank you, Commissioner Pollin and Commissioner, I just was reflecting. Commissioner Saunders made a comment like, oh, you guys had some banter going on. I'm going to miss that. If, I've only been on the commission since the start of 2023, but it feels like it's been like five years, which I guess would be a full term, but we, it's been a real pleasure. And I've really, really, I enjoyed it far more than I expected to, and I expected to enjoy it quite a bit. And I appreciated, I've appreciated the unique perspectives that everyone has brought to this. You know, even former commissioners who are not here, Goldstein, Luke Hach, and many others brought their own spice and zest to it. And I thought that led to some very lively conversations and discussion and some really interesting solutions at times too. So I truly will miss, miss this and hopefully will come back maybe for Public Invited to be Heard or something. But keep up the good work. I will say, I was not here last week and watched the, the meeting and the discussion on the QuickTrip proposal. And without commenting on the council's, the commission's decision, just want to say, like, I thought that was a really valuable debate. And I, I thought that people brought up some really good points on both sides of the proposal there. And I think those types of prioritization and discussions about what constitutes the right balanced mix for an area is a valuable debate to have, regardless of the outcome from that discussion, and I hope you will continue to have it. You know, as, as more proposals, but for a few exceptions, as more proposals come through this commission, you know, that's taking, there is less land after that. The municipal planning area is not growing, as far as I understand, legally can't. And so, you know, every, every decision that this commission weighs in on is a reflection of fewer and fewer spaces to build upon and to develop in alignment with the comp plan. So I appreciate how serious everyone takes it here and the new folks, welcome. You're in for quite the ride and quite a good, quite a good group here. You're in good hands and I'm honestly sad to be leaving. I would not have, if there was, if there was not an opening on council, I would have not wanted to leave this, this body. So I will miss you all and thanks for the good work that I know you will continue to do. I just want to also thank staff for organizing, and Grant and Tony for being here, but Grant for organizing all three of the presentations and topics we had today. That's two of the topics that I'd proposed back in the fall. And I guess the commission will have the honor of handling the third on drive-throughs at an appropriate time. And I look forward to watching the recording of that discussion and learning more about how drive-throughs align or don't align with different parts of Envision Longmont. But I think these study sessions are incredibly valuable and, you know, even I think seasoned commissioners here learned quite a bit from this discussion. So thank you truly for taking the time to organize that. Tony, for sticking it out a little bit past your bedtime. Appreciate it. And the transportation team for coming earlier, so thanks a lot.
We wish you well, councilperson Popkin. Thank you for your service. It's a work session, not a study session. That said as well, council representative comments are not going to be forthcoming because there's no council representative here tonight, to which I might suggest to a new councilperson that a liaison position here could be filled, possibly. That said, moving on to comments from, or items from the planning director, Grant.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I'll just quickly reiterate, I think we're still juggling a couple items for February. And as Phil alluded, may have another, hopefully within the next week, we'll know specific dates, whether or not we have to use, I'll say, the, the second session of the month. So more to come, but we're, we're trying to, again, I think I brought it up on the screen last time, but there's a couple variances that we'd like to have on the same evening, just so that the same hat is being worn in terms of effectively BOA decisions. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but just want to give the commission. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but just wanna give the commission heads up that, again, February will be at least somewhat busy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Grant, comments on the open commission position?
We have an open commission position. Uh, are you inquiring in, in terms of?
What the city plans are for, whether or not they're going to try to fill it or not?
You know, initially, um, Jane and I spoke, at least via email, um, corresponded. I, I think based upon the fact that we do have alternates, we'd like to see how that goes rather than open it up immediately. Um, that's, again, at least the cursory response, so within less than twenty-four hours.
It's city council's prerogative. Whoops. It's council's prerogative to leave it open or fill it, correct?
No, not technically. It would have to go through a recruitment process. And I think they'd wait till the mid-year recruitment when they recruit for some of the other boards. They wouldn't open a special recruitment for one vacancy, I don't believe. And that'd be the city clerk's office who would make that determination with staff.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Paul or Popkin, you're back up. Maybe.
I guess I should probably note that effective at the end of this meeting, I'll be resigning from the commission. So that staff can consider their options.
Others? Thank you. We're in German.